Okay. I guess it's time to start. I don't have a gavel, so. So we need to take a roll call vote? A roll call, not a vote necessarily. Just a roll call. Mrs. Walker?
Yes.
Mrs. Petrie?
Yes.
Mrs. Saharsky?
Yes.
Mr. Erickson? Or Mr. Stevenson?
(laughing).
Mr. Cruz?
Yes.
Mrs. Osho?
Yes.
Alrighty then. Okay. We need to approve the agenda as presented this evening. Did you have a chance to look through it? I hope. Any questions? Okay, do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
I move to approve the agenda.
Thank you. Is there a second? Thank you, Eric.
Erickson.
Mr. Erickson? Mrs. Ginn. Okay, all in favor to approve the agenda, raise your hands. Very good. Okay. So we have several things to discuss this evening. The first one has to do with finances or budget. Okay, you're gonna, that'd be great. Cast those out for us.
Alright, what we wanted to do, I received a question from a board member talking about finances and actual versus budgeted versus projected. So I wanted to send everyone this bit of information and kinda go over it with you. We had this as a topic, finance, because it's so important for our district, but also to discuss kinda where we were, where we are now as we get into negotiations. And that kinda filters in to B on this particular part, outstanding budgeted items or needs that are gonna be happening through the duration of year. We've already kinda talked about that a little bit, but I wanted to cover it again, as well as future financial needs. So if you have this lined piece of paper and a pencil, I kinda walk, I'm gonna walk you through it. What we do, anytime you build a budget, is you look at two years proceeding, and by that is revenues, expenditures, which is part of building your budget. So you see 2012 and 13, and you see actual and budget or projected at the bottom. And actual means that year's been closed out, the auditors have come, and this is the information that's been reported on our annual secretary of the board report to DESI. So I wanna draw your attention up to first, 2012 and 13. And we have this broken down by fund, and you always hear say fund one, fund two, fund three, fund four, and that's exactly the order they're in. They have names, whether the general incidental or the special, which is also the teacher fund, debt, followed by capital. And what we've done is Mrs. Ginn just has taken this and broken it down, and I'm gonna try to go over it with you tonight. First, I wanna draw your attention down to debt, capital, and total all funds. They're in 2012, 2013, actual. You see that figure there of 18 million. And when I first looked at this, I look at what's the total in all funds, and what are we seeing as far as a district? What's happening throughout each one of these years? So I immediately compared 2012 and 13 actual to 2013, 14 actual, and I saw that, wait, there's a seven million dollar change. And what happened during those years with seven million dollars? So I wanna draw your attention back to 12, 13, and look at the debt service fund. During those years, you've had a bond issue, a bond initiative, and the cash was brought in, but wasn't expended in that year. Okay? So you have 4.3 million to the good. But then if you look in 13, 14 actual, you see it was funded the year before, but it was expended in this current year of 6.4 million. So not only did you pay out 4.3, but you also paid off, it looks like, some existing bonds, and I think that was called a crossover. That was my, the June before I came to the district, I was at that meeting when the board paid off some bonds and crossed over and paid off another, and then refinanced some debt to save taxpayer money, which is always great. You paid an estimated 2.1 million of your own money, I should say local money, to help pay down some debt. So there's the first big hurdle in that 11 million versus 18 million. And now we jump over here to the general or fund one, and you see 93,000. That's compared to how much you're spending versus how much you're bringing in. Expenditures versus revenue, and you see that written there. The revenue minus what we spent, you were 93,000 to the good. In 13, 14, that was my first year with the district, we ended at 360,000 to the good. Now let's jump down to 14, 15. The next trend I looked at again was that 11,700,000 and 10,800,000. And I see that we spent more than we brought in of 772,000. And trying to do some research on, okay, what maybe big expenditures did we have during that time? And that year, 14, 15, we had a pretty good jump in insurance. I believe it was right at 300,000, as well as giving a step to our staff. Now, let me draw your attention here to 13, 14, and the special revenue or the teachers' fund, you see 18,862,000. Oh, y'all don't have one of those, do you? I'm here, Dr. Isaacson. I have, luckily I have some special. We have down in the system.
Sure.
So let me draw your attention there to 18,862,000. That is expenditures in the teacher fund. Now look down here at 14, 15, 19,379,000. So more money went out in that fund to 517,000. There's a huge difference right there. And I'm trying to figure out, okay, what did we do? Well, we increased a step. So automatically, you're gonna see, you know, 300,000, 295,000 goes to that step. Now, when we start talking about our support staff, that's not in that teacher fund, okay? That's just teachers, and let me rephrase it, certificated staff, not support staff. The clear difference there. So it's not as much. We spent about 360,000 for every one in the district to get one step. But I broke that down a little bit, so we see 517,000. Okay, well what else happened? Well, insurance went up. And with insurance going up, a step going up, retirement goes up, which you're paying in. So we see that offset cost of that 19,3, the difference is 517,000. And we also ordered a considerable amount of textbooks that year, which also increased cost. And I look back, I believe April 2014, and it was 585,000. So we start adding those large figures together, you see that 772,000, and those were great purchases. Those, that's what our district's needing, and, but yet we're spending 772,000. Now let's jump down here to our last year, 15, 16 budget. Now, I wanna point out that this is as of February 2016. And that was the last time you did, Mrs. Ginn proposed any budget transfers, was in February. So that's the numbers we're using. We believe it's gonna be a lot better than that, because in June 2015, it was showing 1.8. So you remember, we're talking about that 1-point deficit spend, you were, right now it's already at 1.2. So we see that falling down even lower. And a couple of things I wanna point out again. If you look at our expenditure for our teachers, you're looking at 19,856,000 this year versus 19,379,000 last year, that's 477,000. Now, I also wanna point out, and you say, well, hold on, that doesn't make sense. How come it was 517,000 the year before, why is it 477,000 now? Well, we had a reduction in insurance. Okay? But yeah, that was also the year we did what we call the fix. And we voted on that, and that cost us some money. So when you talk about that 1.2 deficit spending, some of that is gonna be that fix, but yet some of the fix was taken care of due to some retirements. Also, when we look at this coming year, I believe that this 1.2 figure is gonna be below 1.1 million easy. I'm hoping more around that 700 to 800,000. But until we get later on in the year, and I know you're thinking, well, it's April, well, remember, we still have May and June and three payrolls to do. I don't wanna get hard numbers on that, because we just don't have it yet. And, but I also wanna point out to you, I know I keep saying "but also", but there's a lot to take in on this sheet of paper, our capital expenditures. You see and look at fund number four, that we spent, we deficit spent 794,000, and we're projected to deficit spend 808,000. And there's two things with that. You don't want a ton of money in capital, or people think you're hiding it. But you also wanna put enough in there to take care of what you need to take care of. And so, as I'm building into our next point, which is budgeted needs in the final quarter, I truly believe that next year is gonna be better. We sincerely hope so. I know that Dr. Isaacson and I and Kelly have really looked hard at our insurance and what we're doing with our insurance next year, as well as our early separation incentive plan. I see a lot of savings coming our next year. But I also want everyone to understand that insurance hinges on how much people utilize the insurance. Because it's a semi-self-funded type policy, we're gonna have to cover some of those expenditures. So we do not, even though, and I wanna state this very clearly, even though it says we're gonna be saving up to $600,000, we're not gonna put $600,000 back in salary schedule, because it's gonna take that money to cover sickness in our district, at least for one year. But we are projecting, as we look forward to next year, we've really worked on the numbers. We would like to do something for our staff, and that's some conversations I want you to be thinking of as we go into negotiations. We would like to add 600 on the base, and not only on the base, but to every employee in the district. We've talked about maybe trying to do 700, we've talked about trying to put another 100 in for our HSA, but right now, we're just, I'm just nervous about that, to be totally honest. Simply because we don't know how insurance is gonna trend. But this time next year, I think we're gonna have a better handle on utilization, because we'll be a year into it, and we can put more into the salary schedule or more into the HSA to encourage participation. So with all that being said, we kinda build into B on this, and as I mentioned a few months back, we're looking in our fund four to spend $80,900. And with that, it's gonna be to fix the drainage at the elementary. And what I mean by drain is over where our buses unload when, and this was a tab issue, Director Petrie, I think, last year. Cutting in, and by the time we got ready to do it, school had started back, and we just had the flood put us back in 2015 down at the bus garage in the school property. Water pools up right there where the buses unloaded at our elementary building. And our kids are having to get out in the water, and then have squeaky shoes and wet feet all day. And so we're gonna cut a drain in there and drain that off down hill. So that is gonna be around $2,500,000, and we're gonna be doing the majority of that work ourselves. Next is the baseball field, which we've talked about. That's right between 18 and 22. And I'm trying to get you some pictures of the field and the big rains that we have. It keeps washing away, and if it keeps washing away far enough, we won't have a baseball field. So we're gonna have to really repair that. Also, the scoreboards, which we were able to buy, and I appreciate Mr. Reno's legwork on that, through the cooperative, Ed Plus Cooperative, CSD, and that's 46,000. And that scoreboard fix will put two brand-new boards at the high school. And those existing boards at the high school are going to the junior high to replace those boards. And anybody who has kids down there knows you have to take both boards to figure out one score. And we're gonna take one board out of the gym two, and that board's going to the intermediate building, so we can have a board here as well. And all that kinda lends into the last thing, and that's 46,000. 10,400 to fix the gym doors. And what I mean by that is, the gym doors have a bar right in the center, and we have to keep pulling that out, and anytime we move things in for band or our flag corps, and it's gotten loose at the high school.
Still high school.
Still the high school. So they're gonna put new doors in right there that won't need, basically, we'll go up in the floor and be flush mounted into the tile. So those things are what we're working on. Now, as we move from there into our future financial needs, of course, we still have the sealant of our high school building out there that's gonna need to be done. We have some major asphalt that needs to be taken care of, especially starting over here on the corner from, if anyone drives a kid to the junior high, you're gonna lose your front end of your car. Now, the line meets up right there with the city, and we're trying to get them to also help come on up. And we start right at, you'll see where the cap ends, and that's where we take off. So we're trying to get them to work with this and redo that whole intersection right over here by the learning, or, excuse me, by the-
There's a hole that's opened up right in front of the high school.
Right in front of the high school. So that would be a patch. This is gonna be a complete tear-down replacement of that asphalt.
Isn't that not going issue with the high school, though, with-
It has. It's simply because of the lack of maintenance when that thing was built. They didn't seal it, they didn't maintain it, and now you have the alligator cracking, and with snow, it just, it falls apart. My first year here, we had to redo Leon Hall. And I think you weren't on the board, you came on next spring, I believe, but we had to do Leon Hall because the same thing happened. But we have some asphalt that needs to be done, and we kinda build some concerns that I have in talking about future financial needs. The state adequacy target, what state aid's gonna do, what's gonna happen with gaming revenues. I mean, all that's kinda in the front of our mind, which Mrs. Ginn and I have been talking to the board about putting a nickel or a dime of our revenue into fund four to help build those reserves back up. But in doing so, you realize it's gonna lower on fund one. It's a give and take. And we'll be eligible for a one-time transfer from one to four this year, and we're projecting around 315,000 to 325,000. So we can take that out of one. Now again, that lowers one in your reserve, but it puts it into four, where we can do some more things. We got the fiber that's gonna be taken care of down at the junior high, that's already been approved. So we have a lot going on this summer that we wanna continue to stay on top of. Now, that was just a, I know, quick overview of where we are budget-wise, and I think I've covered everything I've jotted on this list.
Doc, how much of the 1,021,000 in the ending fund for this year? How much of that is the A property?
I would say 800, almost 900,000 of that.
How much do we owe?
So that's not usable money?
No. When you see that 1.8-
So we take the 80,000, is pretty much all for life?
Yes. You've got maybe 100, 120. Remember, we had that conversation at the facilities meeting, what are we gonna end with? Remember, I said 80 to 120, and that's still pretty close to being accurate. How much do we owe on that? Well, it pays off in 2024.
Okay.
And we pay roughly 150,000 a year. 75,000 goes into basically this fund to be held, and then 75,000 goes to the property owner to pay that bill. And we do it on a monthly payment. That's how it works, rather than one lump payment.
And when did they purchase that?
Oh my.
Wasn't it 20 years?
I thought it was 1994.
I don't know when, but it wasn't in a 20-year-
I could be wrong. That was when-
I think it was maybe Brooks', or children's last year, maybe, or right?
I thought it was, it might have been his second to his last. He was here two years as superintendent, wasn't he? I think he was here, he was here as high school principal for a while.
Yeah, but that was, then he went to Herkuleinian, and then he went to Lindbergh, and then he came back.
Okay. But I know he was the one that worked that house.
Yeah, he was the one that-
I believe it was in 94. I could be wrong. It might be 2,000, and- It could be '04. I might have my years wrong.
I could be wrong.
Well, if it's a 20-year note, it would be '04.
I was thinking it was 20 years. Because I knew we were over halfway now.
It was odd, I thought it was 20 or 22, it was in the 20s.
Oh, it was odd, I'm not seeing it.
And the reason, I mean, the board at that time, the reason for doing that is it doesn't go against your unrestricted fund balance. I mean, and the way Lockport Landing was growing, and then the district was growing, back at that time, they felt that was a need.
I talked to him quite a while about it, and he's like, Rob, you know, I still stand by the, the decision was good back then, but, he's like, who would've known that after we bought that-
In 2014, it would trade.
That all the plans of a long highway was gonna tank.
Right. The board will have about, right at 3 million, I think 3.1 million in that property.
Right now.
That's what we will have when you pay it off.
Okay.
Because you, all the money you're holding back, this 800, as it grows, just think of it like this, for that 800, almost 900,000, you've already paid that same amount. So when you double that, that's 1.6, and you still have several years left to go. I think you have 3.1 would be the total you've paid for. The board has spoke with the trust and tried to, well, I have, and tried to get reduced interest rate. Right now, your interest only is 5 percent. Tried to get that lowered, and we were unable to do so, because the owners of the trust were more than happy to, but the recipients of the trust were not at that time interested in reworking the interest rate. So that's kinda a little bit about where we are there. I hope that that kinda brings into perspective what we've been dealing with, where we're going. And I hope that, like I said, that 1.2 definitely goes to 772.
So we're still looking at another year of deficit?
I would say that the potential is there, yes. Simply because of, one, funding, and, two, needs of the district. I mean, we can't say we're not gonna purchase textbooks, because we don't want deficit spend.
No.
You know, and so people need to realize that in order to educate kids, we're gonna spend money to do it. And trust me, I'd much rather be in 13, 14, my first year, than have 306,000 to the good. But when you have insurance going up, you have incentives, you have fixes, you have, those things add up.
So worst-case scenario, so we've got what we're dealing with here. We've got $8 million in repairs, or $9 million in repairs, not counting stuff like the overcrowding, there are no space at the primary and stuff. What's the worst-case scenario if the community decides not to put in the bond?
I think there are some things that the board would not be able to do, such as, we wouldn't be able to do our vehicle replacement rotation. We wouldn't be able to do asphalt repair, because those things, even though they impact kids, they don't have a direct impact on kids. We'd have to look at staffing. And by that, I mean, you know, right now, we have, I think Dr. Isaacson said today in one of the insurance committee meetings, some of the lowest class sizes in the county compared to the teacher-student ratio. It might be through attrition or riffing that we have to make some hard decisions when it comes to our staffing needs. But ultimately, for me, the perspective that I have, I'm not in the extremely concerned, worried mode right now. I mean, you still have, we're ending between that 11 to 13 percent unrestricted is what we're shooting for. But understand, if I was at 18 or 22, I'd be a lot more tickled. But you wouldn't be doing the things you've done over the past four or five years either. You know, you save it, but you're gonna have to put it in sometime or another. Those repairs, to be honest, I think the public would understand what our needs are, but I think we have needs outside of what's on that list. I mean, I would love to see us start looking into a Missouri preschool project or early childhood education, but yet we don't have the room. We need to build a wing somewhere, or invest in a building somewhere. Those are things that would be, that's great for kids, because I see so many kids coming into kindergarten and listening to talk to our kindergarten teachers that aren't prepared. And, you know, and they're not, they're behind. Well, we can't continue to grow and educate kids if we're going and having to get them kindergarten-ready. We need to really develop kindergarten readiness skills. And I believe our public would support something like that. My concern is that the public's gonna say, you should've been taking care of the parking lot all along. I'm not voting for a bond issue, because you didn't do what you should be doing. And so that's gonna be the education piece that we're gonna have to do for the public as we decide, on the 18th, okay, we can go for 11, do we need 11, or do we need 7, or what do we need? What will the public support? And I know that's a long way to answer your question, Rob, but what it boils down to is, it's hard to say. If they don't vote for it, we're not gonna be able to do the things that we're striving for.
I mean, will it affect, like we saw with Hazelwood news, cancel and ban and-
I don't see a pity there. What we would do first is, okay, we're not gonna buy two buses this year, we're gonna wait a year. I see those kind of things happening, rather than cutting programs, because that's not good for kids. And I mean, ultimately, I mean, people talk about cutting sports. You know, 1 to 2 percent of our budget goes to athletics and activities. I don't see that as being a fix. You'll have to look at people. I mean, that's the hard conversation that the board will have to have. You have to look at people, because that's where your money is. You just have to make some hard decisions there.
When was the last election or bond issue?
2000 and, you refinance, I think 2012 was your last issue. Yeah, just look up here, yeah, 2012, 13 was when your last, because you see that 4 million up there. That's when you got the bonds.
In one of the meetings, we had someone speak, and they said that the board had failed in utilizing our levy properly, when we could've had more money or something. What exactly did that mean to you?
They're talking about the rollback. You do a voluntary rollback. But what you're rolling, what you're rolling back is your debt service. So let's take a look at your debt. That's gonna be column three over here. You glance down, you'll see the 4 million, you'll see this is the 6 million. And remember, that's where we paid out money. Alright, you see this 617? You're building it back up. Okay? 743, you're building it up. What that does, rolling back your levy, means you're not collecting in this fund. This fund doesn't help you, this fund pays off your debt. This fund does not help your fund one, two, or fund four. So what happens is, if you build that up too fast, you're having to go out and pay off that debt quicker than it should be paid off. And what I mean by that is, see the way debt works? Bonds are recalled like for five years. You refinance, you go shorter term, kinda like your house, but I keep my payment and I pay some down, so you owe less for longer. So if you pay them off too quick, then the people buying the bonds get a little frustrated, because they're not making the long-term money on interest, if that makes sense. So it's kind of a give and take. If you draw it in too fast, then your actual levy starts dropping. The one in fund one, fund two, and what you put in fund four. So yes, you can collect more money from the people, but it's going in there. Any other questions on that? I know it's a quick overview, if you wanna soak that in, call me, or we can talk about it at our next meeting, because we're gonna have our financial advisor here for that conversation.
Do you have a clue as when the last tax increase was versus the bond issue? Just same tax.
Wow.
I mean, did it go all the way back to like, building the primary building?
Because what happens is, once you set your tax rate ceiling, every year, you know, it kind of, it starts dropping. But when you vote a bond, it jumps back up, but it's not, like I said, your general fund. It goes into your bonds, and then you draw it into your total overall levy. It's called your adjusted, unadjusted levy. Let me look, because I have-
There was a tax increase the year-
There was a tax increase for that.
The original, which was, gosh.
Now, was that a general?
It was the year before you graduated.
So 95, then, yeah.
And what that is, is they vote to raise the ceiling. I was hoping, I had some information here, that maybe it'll have me, this is just a debt schedule of your bonds.
And that was probably the last time they actually did it.
Well, was the high school built with the bond, or was it built with the tax increase? Well, you have to raise taxes in order to sell bonds.
Yeah, okay.
Because that's what funds are.
Okay. So the high schools, what, 2,000?
Your only other option is to-
Well, we built that.
Okay. Your only other option is to do a lease purchase, which is not, not good.
How many, do you know how many years he's in here? Was he here that long?
It's here for your general, right?
Right. Well, I remember having a hard time passing the bond issue, Ginn.
The bond issue or the tax?
I don't remember. It took us a couple of tries to do it.
Well, then maybe that was one that after he left. But I, I don't know, maybe it did take more than one. But I know that the year he left, they passed the tax question.
Well, maybe it was tax.
Tax, Mrs. Ginn.
Remember, teachers and kids all stand on the highway with signs.
Yeah.
Well, that's when they were talking about cutting sports, at that time, wasn't it?
That was, that was the early 90s.
Yeah, that was.
91.
This has been later than that.
Yeah, 91 was when that happened, because that's when it got passed, is after the walkout.
Right.
And that was the first. The first one.
Yeah, this is, this was way after that.
Yeah.
After the walkout stuff.
Well, I can tell you what your levy'll need to be in 2027 to pay on your debt, but I don't have what it was, what your ceiling was, and the last time you passed a levy to raise your tax rate ceiling. Most of the time, what you do is you're just selling bonds.
Because I think it was a bond issue, because we were, the first time we did it, people, we were shocked that it didn't pass.
Do you remember who the superintendent was?
Might've been Smith.
So proposition B.
Because Brian McKinney was in this then.
Okay, well, that was way after general.
Yeah, that's only, that's been within seven years, maybe.
Well, the style was the first time that we-
'09?
That was a-
That was your high school, wasn't it?
Yes. That was Styles after.
Yeah, November 3rd, 09.
Yeah, Wally was after Gen.
Because I remember that was hard to get people to pass that bond.
And what happens is, and that's why if you pay your bonds off too quick, that's another reason you're careful. Because if it drops that levy too fast and you're not ready for another initiative, you're going to have to have people raise their taxes in order to help you. Whereas now, you're maintaining the current rate. And it's an extension, not an increase. And people more apt to vote for something that's not going to cost them more.
Just longer.
Just longer.
Does it fit into it?
Current tax rate of 4.75 is the third highest in Jefferson County behind Grandview, which is right above us. And Windsor has the highest, I believe, at 4.85. Grandview may be at 4.84. We have the third, currently the third highest, just above that.
So what we had in finance.
Is that also the budget discussion?
Yes.
Okay, so that gets us then to the bond issue. Anybody have any other questions or thoughts before we move on? Concerns that they wanted to discuss? Okay. So we'll flip on then to bond issues or issue.
All right, we presented this to you back, I think, a month or two ago on a big master planning spreadsheet. And this is really, you know, if you want to start initial discussions this evening and looking through what the architects have identified as priority needs. And that was in conjunction with Ray Bass and the facilities committee. And as you glance down through here, I'd highlighted some things, which is, I think, on my sheet, but maybe not on yours, that have already been repaired or are going to be repaired. Which I think it's important when you show this to the public that we are taking care of some of these things, but other things we just can't take care of. And trying to decide collectively as a board, what do you feel are the most important things? And, because we have needs that we can't locally meet with our local dollars. It's going to have to take a bigger set of income through bond initiative that would allow us to do these things. For example, one huge thing in a big extent are the bleachers at the junior high. That, that is a huge problem. And I mean, more of a want than a need would be air conditioning at the junior high in the gym. Parents going down there for activities, events, whether they are band concerts or athletic contests. A lot of people are wishing there's air. But another huge thing at junior high is the electrical switchgear towers. You see that second junior high school down here under building safety and security. To me, the public, if it's not safe for kids, it's something they're willing to take a hard look at and will be more willing to do, as well as something that improves student learning. What I see that, you know, code compliance, I don't know that our public would jump on, you know, hey, we need a handrail ADA compliance. Well, you need, you know, you need to fix a bleacher first, you need to do this. So, yes, ma'am.
I just, I'm assuming the yellow has been done.
Yes, ma'am, it's been done or we're working on it currently.
Okay, how about the green?
The green, oh, that's color coded on expenditures and I think that was from the architect. The only thing I had it was yellow. The greens were what they're saying I think was most important or high priority. And then I think the orange, then followed by the purple. I don't have the color key code in front of me. Oh, there you go. It's at the bottom.
I thought the purple wasn't on mine either.
Okay, I don't have that.
I don't have it.
This, I, this must be my old one. Because that's what, when they asked John at the last meeting, I didn't have it. But then I found it.
The mid packages is what that.
Right.
Yeah, that's what it is.
Mid package two and then big package three is orange.
They've taken those and added them up in columns. And the green would cost you this, you know, purple would cost you this.
Okay, then the other question I have is, this says that the cost estimates were taken from the 2013 facilities assessment report. Now, that was three years ago.
Yes.
So are these current expenditures?
What they did was they've used information from that, and that was done by our previous architect.
Okay.
Help me out with that, who was that?
Previous?
Our previous architect. It's the one right before them. Starts with a D, doesn't it? Bond, bond architect. Isn't that right?
So the facilities assessment was actually done by a previous architect?
Correct. And then our new architect looked at that, developed this, and did a needs assessment on the importance of what order to put in, but believed their figures were still pretty solid on what it would cost manpower wise. That's kind of the conversation.
The monetary amounts here are current?
Close, yes.
Okay, because if we would go for a bond issue in 2017, before any of this would be built, it would be 2018, correct?
Yes, or it would start as soon as the bonds, like in the summer of 2017, 17, 18 school year.
Okay.
For example, that switchgear tower, it would have to be done when school's not in session because there'd be no electricity at the junior high. Or the bleachers, all that would happen during that time. And then some, for example, it might be in the summer of 2018, if that makes sense.
Right, well, that's what I mean, some of this is going to be two years down the road from right now.
Right. You are correct. So I think the key, key thing to look at is this and then develop it from there. And what I mean by that is, we might have some rubies that need to be worked on, need some. Right now, they're still under warranty, but I don't know what's going to happen in a year or two. Yes, ma'am?
Explain contingency, 10% soft cost, 2%.
Contingencies are, they're building in contingencies based upon whether labor changes, how the bids come in.
So that's kind of like the difference, okay.
Right, so that's kind of how that's figured. Contingency is, we don't know, soft cost.
Cost in it versus them?
No, a soft cost, Rob, can I see your paper now, please?
It's at the bottom of the, the bid package.
I don't know if that's a. I think contingency is the way the bid comes in. Soft cost is, it could fluctuate either way. And what I mean by that is, for example, if you bid something and you have a change of order, that's a contingency. A soft cost is, these figures might not be firm. Does that make, make sense?
Is there any way that we can get that, not tonight, but I would like that copy?
I ask, what I got, I thought was the full piece. I'm sure I have one of those somewhere we can make a copy. This, I think, was sent to me by Mr. Bass.
Okay.
And it might be, this is the only digital copy I had.
Okay.
But we can make one of those.
And I think the only difference in it is the bid package at the bottom.
Okay.
Because when I was comparing them, they were the same.
When the architects came and presented.
That's what we got.
When the architects were here to present, I believe that's when you got that one.
I have one question. Talking about the property that on A and everything, is there any way that if we did do a bond issue, that we could wrap that property debt into the bond issue? And then just get, get rid of that and then?
If, here is my thought. And when I have in the past done a bond issue, the support, we wanted to do a vocational agricultural building with a greenhouse attached where the kids can grow their plants, their poinsettias for Christmas, and different things for the community, their fundraisers. And part of the community didn't really want to support that. They didn't see a big need there. So what we did was, we split it apart. We built a new, our middle school, and we had two initiatives on there. So the public voted on both, rather than wrapping them together and losing the support because they didn't want the greenhouse. If that's something, I would encourage you to break it apart and then say, we want, yes, you can put that on the same initiative and sell the bonds for like real estate purchase.
Okay, well, what is our plan to go out and sell this to the community?
Well, when the board finally decides what we want to do, we decide on the cost of what you want to spend and the things you want to do. We do several community forums where the community comes in, several brochures. In the past, I've done tri-folds, talked about need, we talked about the tax level. We talk about, you know, how much you increase the taxes. We have the public come in, we have our architects there, and we discuss the need. And I had between four and five of those between, I think, August and April.
Okay, what about going out to the community? I think that might work better here than having them come to us. I think us going out would work a lot better.
Well, yeah, and Festus went through this.
They use Education Plus to help them, which is definitely, we can do that as well. But they're kind of having a transition in their.
We could kind of discuss sticking that lot, that A lot into that. The problem we've talked about is that it's not worth, it's not worth near what we're paying for.
Well, I know that, but.
Until you tell them that we're going to pay it off and then sell it, and then we can only sell it for a million.
I don't, I don't, I don't think you sell off something you paid more than half on and even, I mean, you know.
You have a lot of money invested, you're absolutely right.
Yes.
You're 800,000, well, 1.6 right now, isn't it?
Right, and I don't think the public is going to buy us just saying, hey, it was a mistake, now let's get rid of it. And that's not going to flow, you know, it's just not going to go.
But it would save the district, and that's the issue. That 175 actually would go right back into your Fund 1. You're paying 175,000 for something that's not bringing in any revenue or any tax base to pay for. You're just writing it right out of your savings account every year. And if you were able to pay it off.
Exactly.
Then you would be able to reallocate that money to somewhere else.
Yes.
So I agree, that's something that needs to be strongly considered.
And if we can sell, I mean, like I said, if we can go out and at least give options and sell that, but, you know.
And there's several things we can do, like, for example, we had the Lions Club, the Rotary, things of that nature that I went to and presented. You have to be very careful, though, with co-mingling of those funds of paying, paying with state and federal dollars an employee to go out and say vote yes. So we have to be very careful in the language. Now, you as a board, you can go out and say vote yes, and you can put signs in your yard, whatever you want to do. However, we have to be careful at school, during school hours, how we have those conversations.
Right, and I'm thinking most of this would be done outside of school, not during school.
Typically, yes. I was referring to meeting Rotary and all those focuses during the school day, not at night. So we, I'd have to be careful, which I understand that. The leaflets, pamphlets, any brochures we could send out, you are able to do that. You just can't say vote yes. You can just educate the public.
Well, it has to be information.
Correct.
Right.
They go home in the backpack mail, but we could put that on website and.
Yes. So from here, we need to, and you might not want to do these things. You might say, hey, you know, this would be great, but we want to renovate the junior high. Or we want to.
When I looked at this, junior high is a mess.
We need to renovate the junior high.
And I've noticed this something functioned at elementary. The parking was atrocious. There's not enough room. And I mean, you've got parking all the way up, no sidewalks, you're walking in the gutter or, you know.
With RV, elementary.
And that's something I think, hopefully, we can look at and see what we can do with that. I don't know if you've got the playground up there, but I don't know if it's used for events. I think that's something that was talked about, not being parked on wherever it got me. Hey, you're definitely right.
At the intermediate?
The one behind the intermediate.
Yeah, in the.
Yeah, so I mean, there's.
But we've opened that up in County.
Oh, I know, yeah, yeah. But I mean, you know, just to figure something out for those funky stuff there because it's, it's bad. And, you know, it's, I just.
We're kind of landlocked through here.
Yeah, yeah.
The only patch we have is the patch between the elementary and the junior high.
We've got that down at the bottom of that hill where the old swing sets used to be years ago. And that takes some work and some shoring up to do, but that's about the only spot you've got there with the practice field.
Agreed.
So you can build a garage, go up.
Only if I get the man to gate.
Okay.
I'm pretty sure it's the junior high that Sheldon told me, the reason they bought that property is because they didn't think the junior high was, building was going to be inhabitable much longer. And then it was just going to get used for storage or knocked down. So it's got a lot more life on it than I think they expected.
Well, and that was before this building was here too. Because the building that was housed here, they did tear down. Because higher were moving. Who was my, yeah, mine too, right here.
John has made that statement, now whether he was being sarcastic or whatever I was going to ask him, that, you know, is that the facilities discussion that built a new junior high and?
And I think that's a great point because we do not have to, we, before July, we got to have something, August, we need to know what we want to do.
Sure.
We, it's not like we're pressed by the 18th, we have to have something decided at the point. What we're going to hear on the 18th is how much you can go for, then we need to go out and look at how much we want to spend. But I agree that that junior high is in pretty rough shape. We got kids in modular units that when you walk, I don't really, I just knock on the door and say, hi. I don't.
We did that 20 years ago.
You know, you can feel it's sponge, you know, it's just spongy down there.
Or see things crawling up on the floor.
And so I think that would be something the public would support, renovating that building. But yet, that's not really going to help us with some of the other things we have to do. That's going to be the tough decision. If you add that property and that 1.5 million you're going to need is going to definitely drastically reduce the 1.5, or 9.5, you can go.
And I think the big question that's probably going to come up a lot of times is, I'd like to know, why wasn't this taken care of before now? Why is it, why is our back against the wall? We've got stuff falling apart, so we've got to make an effort to, to make sure that those fixes are happening and that's working to our budget, that those, we're budgeting for those expenses. So for ceiling, for, you know, athletic, whatever it may be, you know, we've got to make sure that.
Just transparency and us communicating with the public.
And there's been a huge discussion and a, and a big debate over how we can do that. One discussion we had, Dr. Isaacson, Mrs. Ginge and I, was, okay, we're just going to give the gate proceeds from all the gates and it's going into facility maintenance. Because that baseball field would not be where it is if when it was built, people put 1,000 to 1,200 in it every year to maintain it, instead of just not, we're not going to mess with it. You know, I don't, I can't speak to prior administration, wasn't here. You know, but what I do know is, it's a lot easier to pay 500, 1,200 a year to maintain a field than having to come up with $20,000.
And you're talking the high school field.
Yes, yes.
I mean, it's equivalent by the way, and that's.
Exactly. And I'm going to tell you right now, you have no plan, you have no capital plan for the turf at the football field. You have no plan. And you're looking at $300,000 to replace that. It's on year nine, and those things normally last between five and seven years. And you're on year nine, and they're telling us, hey, you've got one of the best fields. And I commend, you know, our athletic department for taking care of it. Every, two or three times a year, they have it rolled, brushed, they have, you wouldn't be surprised, you'd be surprised how many Bobby pins have come off that field. That can tear holes in it. And we did some minor repairs, I think, to one of the end zones where the turf was tearing. We did some minor repairs, but you have no plan.
And that's not even on.
That's not even on there. Now, your track needs to be resurfaced. You're looking at about 36, isn't that what we're talking about? 36 to 60, depending on what you do.
So where does the gate money go now?
Gate money now comes back into the district and the district kind of works into facilities, is basically how we do it. Problem is, you're still paying for all of your officials. And some of that gate money comes and helps offset those costs. So in essence, you're going to be giving, dedicating 40 to 50,000 every year to facilities, but you're going to have to eat it somewhere else. But yet, you have a plan and you say, okay, we, this is our structure over the next five years. This is what we're going to replace, this is what we're going to fix. Your basketball court, you're having to refinish, it would come out of that money, instead of you having to pay for it as a district. But understand, there are some sports that bring in and generate more revenue than others. Football brings in two to three times what, I'm sorry to say, volleyball would bring in. But of course, you also have the cost of electricity that the district just uses to, as part of doing business. It's good for kids. But the perspective there, we've had that talk. Can we plan for the future by doing that? But you're still committing district funds toward it. But yet, we owe that accountability of, it's on you to plan for repairing the field. It's on you. And when the, and I, this was years ago, but when the building was built and the facility was, was put in place, there was supposed to be a fee. And you see that, I think, twice a year from, from the athletic department of who's paid what to use the facilities. And the whole purpose in that was to generate the money to pay for the field. But somebody didn't figure that out because there's no way, one, that was going to happen. Because you can't charge 100 bucks an hour and expect it to make $300,000 in 10 years. It, that just doesn't work. But on top of that, we're not being good neighbors. We're charging middle league for a Saturday to play football, when we're gonna need those parents to support the district when we go up for a bond admission. You know, it's, it's a give and take, and I know it's wearing terror on our facilities, but yet it's also, people are in here and they see what our needs are.
I thought we just approved not to.
We did.
Okay, that's what I was.
That's why.
And they collected like twenty-five hundred.
Yeah, it was like twenty-five hundred, or it was less than ten thousand over ten years. You know, we.
Sort of one lane.
Can I interject? And one of the things, when we've talked about the gate funds, and I think it's important to look at is, you're never gonna generate. I think the budgeted amount for that was like twenty-three or twenty-four thousand dollars a year, gate proceeds. Is, and we may end up, I think we're higher than that by about three thousand dollars right now. But that money can't be used to replace like a football field. And talking about it, there's things like replacing the roof on your house is different than, hey, you gotta fix the shutters. We haven't ever resealed the blacktopper on there, we haven't fixed the baseball field, and it puts it on Mr. Marino, that department, and our facilities. Keep those facilities up with the everyday repairs that you need to be keeping up with. When we have to do a huge replacement, those are bond issue type items. But the general maintenance and not putting the extras, the, some of that could be that, but there's the scoreboards. Hey, you gotta save for a rainy day, and you're gonna be replacing your scoreboards. Is budgeting that with your coaches rather, because right now, the board does end up paying for it. Do some big chunks and put, rather than kind of budgeting for that, planning, and putting with coaches, hey, we'll get that for you, you're gonna have to wait a couple of years. Okay, and then they'll come back and having that occur, but not, the football field, I guess it's important to clarify, that will never.
Correct.
It'll be similar to that amount, it would take years to fix a football field, and you're not fixing the other things while you're trying to save for that.
And it goes back to, I mean, the facility committee, they really were the urgent thinkers. I mean, they talked about, okay, maybe we can do some advertising, use that advertising to help offset costs and facility repairs with, with our athletic complexes. And we have a board policy that talks about, hey, you really can go into advertising and selling, that kind of thing, due to ma- maintenance upkeep. But there's a lot of districts, and I say a lot, and Dr. Isaacs and I, he might have to help me on this, like St. Genevieve, and there's schools all around that are going to video boards. And they go out in the community and sell that. Well, to me, it'd be great, hey, I'd love to have a video board. But to be honest with you, I just want a scoreboard that works right now, that we have a need that's different than a video board. But yet, we need to focus on taking care of what we have and getting it up to the right level where the public sees it work, taking care of themselves.
You have to look at the cities, I mean, Farmington.
Sure.
Farmington paid for seventy-five percent of their football field from the advertising on their side. But Farmington has a business.
They want to advertise.
A business sector to their town.
Correct.
They've grown, or at least about as long as they're ten years. It's unreal.
Well, I had a friend talk to me, he's, ended this electrician group, and they want to volunteer some of their services to help with some things. So I kind of steered him your, your way.
Sure.
Because he had talked about scoreboards and, and things, and I was like, well, that's one of our issues, so.
And that helps, because we had some people help with run electricity on some of the lights and head that were hit, I mean, so yeah, we taking help.
Well, and I said, I mean, I didn't know exactly what they do, but I'm like, yeah, we can find something.
Run the electric for the school board at the elementary, or the intermediate building, there's a lot of things in the.
They wanted to make some donation of their time and.
Resources, sure.
Issues too, so.
So that kind of goes into be evaluated needs, is what we're talking about tonight, and I think it's important for the board to, I need each one of you to really hit that hard this week and up to the eighteenth. So you can have that fruitful discussion, and then that goes into our timeline, and I talked a little bit about that. May the eighteenth, we're gonna have conversation, in June, July, by July, when you really start pinpointing exactly what we need. And I think that the board might want to look at the facilities committee, after that's approved, at this next May eighteenth meeting. And say, we want you to, you know, get the architects down here, look at these facilities, and let's rank this based upon our highest priorities are. And is the junior high renovation an option? What really needs to be done, and be prepared to come back in June, July and present that. So in August, we can start getting prepared to go to our public and let them know what our needs are. And then, as you get into that December, you will start getting your bonding language done, you'll send that to your bond attorney. Typically Gilmore and Bell out of Kansas City, take care of your bonding language. And, and I always want to caution boards that whatever you put on that piece of paper, what people vote for is what you're spending the money on. Don't come in here and say we're raising teacher salaries with it, because they can't do that, it's against the law. So we'll make sure that all is done. Again, we'll start prepping everybody, January, February, we will hit it extremely hard, as we get ready to move into April. We will have our community forums, however the board wants to proceed, it will be a topic of discussion, probably every board meeting, starting in August. To know planning, where we are, how are we doing. I'll plan on contacting Educational Plus or CSD, asking them to break down some of what Festus did, get them in, and talking with them on our public communications. How do we do this, what's the best way to get to our public? We'll have a lot of surveys going out, and that might be something Dr. Isaacs and Ms. Hiltonbrand and I will work on in July, surveying our public. On, hey, what do you see are the biggest needs? We might take out a hat in the papers and say, hey, go to our website and take our survey, we wanna know what you think. And, or we might do a postcard mailer out, hey, what do you, what do you, as, what do you want us to do in our district? So from all of that, we will build into March, April, and from there, we're gonna passage of the issue. And then it'll take a month to two months to get everything up to the Secretary of State, to get all the bonds stamped, approved, and sold. And as with the board, I'm sure you want us to try to focus on selling as much locally as possible to our, our banks or community members first. And then selling outside, we'll have to talk to Stifel Nicolaus about that at that time. Stifel Nicolaus, for those of you that know or they're new to the board, they are our financial advisors, the board voted on them, I think, in June of two thousand fourteen. We have a three-year contract at no cost to the district. We don't pay them anything unless we run a bond issue. And of course, they're gonna be doing all the legwork, or I should say, a lot of the legwork, and that's where they get paid.
So they get a percentage of the bond?
Yes. So like, I, I don't want to, you hold me to it, won't you? One to two percent, I think, one to two percent. In the past, I've heard of upwards of five percent, but I don't think it's from Stifel Nicolaus. Yes, ma'am?
So, how many years, is it two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty, that our bond amount changes?
Yes, ma'am.
So which one?
Nineteen.
Nineteen.
We have.
So we have two years.
Well, you have two years, but you can run it in different months. And one to April, because it's a simple majority, not a super majority, you know, two-thirds, four-sevenths, it's a lot easier to pass. You could go in August, you could go in February, April's the best time.
So, is it December of two thousand nineteen, we have until that time before the bond amount changes, okay?
And basically what that means is, it rolls off.
Right.
And it'll have to be a tax increase to do anything.
Right.
And I mean, you have a great, a great thing to sell to your public, you've been great stewards of their money. You know, we've got some things that need to be fixed, but we're paying off their bonds fast. We're refinancing, I think you saved a one point three million with your last refinance. So you're, you also paid two point one million in addition that you didn't have to pay. So, I mean, there's some good selling points there about being good stewards of your debt. Now, there's a different conversation in being good stewards of the facilities. That's, that's a totally different conversation, we're gonna have to really change how we communicate that to our public.
So at what meeting would we find out? Would that be with the architects, like, how much life we have left in the junior high?
Yes.
So, because if, talking four years, you know, can we make it four years, or, you know, how much are we gonna stick to this?
I'm gonna be honest with you, Rob, I think the radar thing and what you've done to mitigate that has really helped. And, and, but that also sells, I mean, again, you're talking about student safety and teacher safety, and when you talk to people that, look, we've mitigated this, but we wanna make sure, we need to renovate, we need to fill these cracks. And, you know, we've been watching those, I keep pointing to people, John, now he's been the longest on the board with me, but when I first got here with George Englebach, they started talking about the wall shifting and watched that, and we've been, that's been three years.
Yeah, and I don't know, that building's only, what, forty years old? Compared to the elementary building, it's a lot older.
But I think the elementary used to. Yeah.
Well. Well, but so did the junior high.
Oh, I didn't know if it was four renovations.
Yeah, they did a lot of things in the junior high, but, I mean, I remember when the junior high was built, that's really sad.
I also want to say, you're talking about.
I know.
I got, I was, I went into that building when it was brand new.
And I don't know what the terrain was like when they built the elementary, but you're built, you built the junior high on fill. You know, just, you filled a hole and built a junior high, and it's a little different than cutting some rock and building an elementary.
But I know all the buildings had things done to them before they built the intermediate, it was kind of a cycle they went through and.
I mean, in my mind, I'd love to see a wing built on the primary, some way, somehow, and, and, and get a, get a early childhood education center. I would love to do it. I know Missouri Crete School Project will give you a hundred percent, and then it starts going, and so by year five, you know, a hundred percent, you're taking care of it, and that's the only thing that concerns me. They'll give you a grant to start with your teachers, your programming. We'd have, in my prior districts, we had sliding scales based upon if kids were on free lunch, some was portioned paid, some was a hundred percent free. But all the slots go based on need. And after year four, you know, you're down to twenty-five percent that they're funding it. So each year, you're absorbing more of the cost, and the final year, it's yours, and you have to commit to keeping it for so many years. It's great for kids.
We are.
We just have to make sure, one, we got the room, two, we're gonna be able to financially support that, because you're looking at five to six more teachers coming on.
But they usually are not as expensive, because you don't have BS level teachers in your early childhood.
Well.
I mean, it'd be nice to have all BS teachers, not, yeah, bachelor's assignments, teachers, but, yes, but.
I'm pretty sure that they have.
That depends on the grant.
Thank you.
Money.
It does, it's fully green.
Most of them do, you do have to have a early childhood certification.
For each teacher?
Yes. Your parents even.
Because I know Sefan does not have certified.
It might be based on the program they have, if they're funding it themselves, they can direct how they're, yeah. But again, I mean, that's something, and we talked about that with, with our, our new board members, you know, it wasn't high on the priority list, but to a district, it's pretty high on the priority list.
Well, yeah, think about how it could impact the learning of the kids.
The, the, I've heard, same, I threw you into victory, and, you know, I could tell by the, you know, I'm sure my fellows, they'd tell, you know, she'd be talking to a teacher, and they'd say, you know, you can never tell. The kids that have preschool, especially the ones that went there versus the ones that didn't. I mean, they're exposed to that, they're exposed to the routine, the routine is huge, regardless of the kid, the educational aspect, the routine is huge. But, you know, yeah, that could, that could pay out huge for us and our kids.
And it gets them further, you're able to do more with, with those.
You know, you get them in kindergarten, and your first, you know, your first few months, you're not teaching them to be a student, you can actually get into, you know, to meet teenagers. I don't, you're still teaching, they're still teaching them, but I mean, it'd be a shorter curve.
Well, you're further up the ladder.
Exactly. Been talking to Tom Muzzi one night in a training class I went to. He, he was telling me that he felt that our primary is too big. He said that adding on to it is a mistake, that there's studies showing that if you keep making that building bigger, you're gonna have other issues. And he's like, my idea was always turn the primary into a pre-K, K, and then carve ten acres out of that A property. Build it first in the second grade, and then sell the remainder to the, so to the people that own the property behind it that need access to A, that's his ideal. But I don't know how you get the bus, the buses to work with that.
And I want to tell you this, and, and, and I can respect Tom Muzzi, I do respect him, he's a smart man, and he worked here a lot of years. But the years that he worked here, safety and security of kids has changed. And I totally get it, that that building is big, and it'd be great if we, you know, spent three hundred thousand dollars, bought this corner property, built a facility. But to me, I worry enough being a mile down the road from our kids. I, I don't know if I can handle being six miles away from our kids, you know? I don't like that satellite school, if we have them all here, I worry about that. That's just me, I mean, especially that.
That something in the building?
They tried to sell it to the board, uh, two years ago for three hundred.
In addition, Doc, to the busing is an issue too.
Right.
Because that's an entire separate run.
Six minutes.
To go out, drop off. So the scheduling of the days, you're gonna.
And that was the original, I thought was, a satellite junior high or something.
Fifth, sixth grade.
Right.
A fifth and sixth grade center.
That's what the original public, and I've also heard talk of taking each building and making it a, like the, well, I shouldn't say each building, intermediate in the elementary. Having a, a pre-K kindergarten center, and then do two through six at each one of these buildings. Does that make sense?
And that was also for one, on the new highway too, they were, or the new property, they were gonna do that. There was a lot of controversy over that, about who decides whose kid is in which building. And what if one building performs better than the other?
You see that in districts like Melville and Lindbergh, where it's such a large area, but when they're three miles apart, how do you?
Or they're three hundred yards apart, right? And the thing you're going into is, people are going, once their kids come, this building goes north.
Well, I mean, they taught them the graphics, they, you know, how to divide it up, but it got to be favoritism too, you know? That these people are better, or this group is performing better, and so everybody wants to be in that building, and just, oh, it was.
But you're talking about a psychological change for your teachers if you did that, because now you're going to take first and second out of the primary and distribute it through these two buildings, and then some.
Back to islands.
You're right, you're gonna, you're gonna swap them back around.
You kind of got cohesive teams for the different grade levels.
Right.
But I never understood why we didn't make that primary a junior high, or why our junior high isn't near a high school.
I don't know, it's before my time, but I can tell you.
Well, the junior high was the high school years ago, and the, and then the junior high was also the intermediate building. And then, originally, this portion here, that's in between the intermediate, the newer part, and the learning center, that was the whole school at one point. So, I mean, they just kept bumping up, and.
The junior high students share.
Yeah, they outgrew, everybody just kind of shifted.
Totally agree.
They were next door to one another?
I will give credit to whoever the engineer architect was at the, at the high school, because if you go out the, what end is that? This end of that building, which I would consider south, I don't know, it's kind of.
Parked over the, the big wall.
The big wall? That's like, can be.
Expanded.
Correct, you pull that off, and you keep on building out, I mean, that is intelligent. To me, you, you couldn't do anything different with a primary than to be a primary, because, you know, the little, even the little, the little labs, the bathrooms, they're, the stools, they're all geared for little bitty kids, not bigger kids, so.
What you could do is K through six building out there, I mean, many, many districts have.
Sure.
Island is unique in that all these transitions.
You're not kidding, not only do they have grade level transitions, they got building level transitions.
They do, they do, and, you know, that's tough on, on kids as well, whereas if there was a K through six building, you know, there wouldn't be, you enter and then you leave.
That's just because they never had the funding to build a building that big.
I don't know that it's the funding as much as it was the need.
And that, that's what it was.
Uh, it's the need, and our need really isn't there. Our, I mean, if you think about it, we're busting at the seams at the primary. But now, when I say busting at the seams, we have less kids, but we've gotten more people with, and kids with more needs, if that makes sense.
Those needs that are identified now, they weren't there.
Well, the COF handled so much.
Exactly, yes, exactly.
That's right.
You know, they handled all those things, we didn't have to handle that.
Yeah, so I mean, it.
And that takes up a lot of space.
Well, just the fact that you have twelve grade levels at each grade level, you know, K through six is phenomenal for a normal K through six building.
Festus has like ten, eleven.
So are we doing our spin right? Should we have a? So are we doing our spend right, should we have a separate facility take care of that?
Well, I mean, that's a totally Mrs. Ram conversation, but I mean, you're fine doing it right, yeah, I think we do it right, um, we did have the co-op where our high needs kids could go, but when that dissolved, you know, you can't really put them on a bus and drive them to, to Arnold or to Northwest, uh, and when you look at the least restrictive environment for those kids to meeting their needs, is that really good for them? Um, and when the co-op was here in town, yeah, it was great, uh, but, yeah, I think we're meeting their needs, but ultimately, you're gonna pay for that need monetarily, either you're gonna pay a co-op, or you're gonna pay the staff needs here, if that makes sense, but either way, you're gonna meet that need.
There is one thing in regard to the, the needs, and we've talked with the different principals on, I was visiting with the elementary principals, uh, if we could have a place for students with this type of behaviors, because there's never really enough all in one building to warrant a staff, and so putting in the, like, could, different, depending on the need, go to a specific house, a specific building, and that's where our current setup is, makes it difficult to do that, and I say that from the standpoint of, I'll use my son as an example, say Drew has a disability, and the building that works with his need is the primary, which is great for the first two years, he's a fifth grader now, getting bigger, and he's kind of like, everybody I'm around, my peers are kindergarten first, in a K six setup, they're with their peers, and similarly, you could have a kindergartner in a Mr. Reed hours building from the get-go, and it's hard from a staffing person to meet that need, because you need three to cover instead of one behavior teacher that has, I got a third grader here, I do it with a first grader, and that is, from that structure, it makes it difficult, where the co-op did help us do that.
But even being in a, in a K three building, and, and as a teacher, we had a K three, we had a four, six, and they, they basically were at street apart, and I had K through six being, so whether you were a kindergarten that was emotionally disturbed, or a sixth grader that was emotionally disturbed, I had you, and it's talking self-contained, so it's, I agree a hundred percent of what you're saying, it's a tough, tough thing to do, but as far as meeting needs, needs change, every year, our needs change in this, I mean, we had to have four new parents at the primary, because our needs change, so.
Well, it's just a lot of numbers though, have gotten so big.
They have, I think we're fourteen percent identified right now.
And I know we've got, the new person we hired, they're dedicated to this, right?
Yes.
To spend.
Yes.
So, um, do we have like a written plan, a policy for our, how our spend works, or?
Well, no, I mean, you have, let me take a step back, yes, we normally adopt the state special ed, and we go through the special ed self-monitoring assessment, which we just went through, and, but normally the IEPs drive what happens with each individual kid, because all needs are a little different.
Something like Northwest, you go on their website, and it shows.
We have a model compliance plan, is what it's called.
Policy to deal with, I know, you've struggled, haven't you, with kids maybe, uh, being rough and stuff, and is there plans in place, or how to deal with that?
Yes.
Do you have any other plans?
Yes, we work with, I mean, within their IEPs, but we work with Mr. Whitehead and our process coordinators to meet, to meet those needs as they arise, but then, again, those change every year, and, and sometimes they change from September to March too, so.
Gotcha. Okay, that's, that's what I had there.
So we're not making any decisions?
I don't know if there's any.
Okay, we just need to have a plan in mind of what, of what priorities we want to, to focus on, is that basically?
Yes. Basically, architects put them in order for you, you need to decide as a board if that's the order you like, you want, or you want to do something different.
But because we don't have a money fix yet, we don't know how much we can spend.
Correct.
So this is prioritized with the architects?
Yes.
Okay, I didn't realize that.
That's what those, you know, what to super.
So prioritized between maintenance, code compliance.
Within, when the, within each category.
Correct, right. And then we'll be sure to get you to that.
So like a big chunk of this, we'd love to have a fieldhouse at the high school, but six point three million out of this nine.
It's not all of these.
Isn't, isn't, isn't.
And then you also have, what a lot of people are doing, is the team storm shelters, and that's great, I had one in my prior district, and we turned it into a, uh, half of it, of course, there's a big caterpillar, uh, diesel engine in here, the other half was for the football team to dress, locker room, showers, and then this half over here was a nice, I mean, big, uh, had all kinds of, uh, weights and, um, exercise equipment and those fan bikes, and the public could come in and utilize that, and so, that was paid with FEMA, but it was a storm shelter, and anytime there was a tornado, doors were open, and kids would be in there, you'd have adults on one end, kids on the other, and, you know, the school took priority, but if school wasn't in session, the, um, local EMTs, fire department had a key to it, and they would open it up for the public to come to, so, but yet, that go based on demographics, how many tornadoes you've had, there's a lot that goes into determining if you qualify, and that's a seventy-five, twenty-five percent match from FEMA, but that's, how many tornadoes have you had come through Hillsboro?
More than you think, a lot.
Send a prefab.
Well, our old cafeteria in the intermediate, we used to have the bomb shelter signs on that, remember those?
I do.
And it's now the band room and the choir room, but those rooms are really big.
Someone was just telling me the other day that there was still a bomb shelter down there with food in it.
That I don't know.
Angel, angel told me.
I don't know that up some, man.
Don't talk to everyone.
In the intermediate?
In the intermediate.
And you can down there cafeteria? Yeah, it's the old cafeteria, that's not.
We can look over there. I don't know what the reason is, there.
But that used to be, before they connected, we had, we had an outdoor entrance that went down deep, several, you know, huge wide, and we went in that room, that was the old cafeteria, and there were signs all over it, talked about, it was a bomb shelter.
Really?
Yeah.
Is there still access to it?
Yes, but I think it's.
Only from inside, uh, well, yeah, from inside, yeah, you just have to take stairs to go down, but there's two ways to get in that stuff, plus the elevator. Okay, so that gets to letter D then, with board trainings.
Uh, board trainings, uh, was put on here based on, there'd been talk around the table of our board members here for two years about, do we want to have local trainings, MSBA come in, offer various trainings to the board, do we want to do any community trainings? That was brought up during, uh, our transgender ACOU OCR, when they, when they said they would come down OCR and do a community forum for parents, uh, and then our state trainings about getting the, our board more involved in going to state training collectively as a group, and, so that's why that's on there. I don't really have anything to say about that, I just put it on there for.
And I know we talked about going to one up.
Ferguson or something.
Ferguson, yeah, whenever all that happened, and we didn't go because of what happened, um, and I mentioned the title the next time rolls around, if we could, you know, I still would like to, I mean, I think that could only benefit us as a good group.
And that's what that local is, uh, excuse me, local is here, community is within our community or area, Northwest, or wherever they're holding it, and then again, that state is going to the training.
Well, and we had the extension on the, the evaluation.
The evaluation, yeah.
Video, to know you guys, you know, we talked about it, but I didn't remember for sure, um, and Rob could have gotten onto that one too, or you might have.
I have, yeah.
Okay.
It's really short.
It's not very long, yeah.
And April the twelfth, we received an email, uh, from MSBA that had a parliamentary procedure.
Yes.
And I don't know if you guys would have been on it yet.
Yeah, we didn't.
But it does give you, uh, if you'll have the forum and access back to the, give you
an hour of training credit, and, um, April the twelfth, we got an email from MSBA, and there is, uh, Dr. Leonard, somebody, who is the MSBA guru on parliamentary procedure, and it's a real quick six session to watch.
We can pull that up on your email and send it out. We'll, we'll forward it to you.
Okay.
Because, um, my opinion, I think this is very, very important, you learn so much going through the essential training that you guys will be going through, first of all, but there's more on top of that, um, and when I came back from, I guess, my first conference, the number of school districts that as a school board, they do go, they attend, and they're, recognizes outstanding school boards, um, and you must, to be an outstanding school board, you must have one person at master level, I have reached that level, uh, you have to have two advanced, I know Lisa's on the verge of getting there, um, and then all the rest have to be essentially trained, and, um, you have to go to so many, you know, conferences and all that kind of thing, so, um, you know, and we're always getting info from MSBA to keep us informed as to, you know, what's going on, so.
Well, they have the one in June.
Yes, and, um.
And then the one in Florida.
Renee and I are going to that for sure, and if anybody else wants to go, you're welcome.
Are there classes on that Friday?
Is that the third?
Um, there is.
I think it's Saturday, Sunday.
It's a Saturday, Sunday, there is a Friday after the board president.
Okay.
But I talked about going down on the third for the pre.
Board president.
There's a board president agenda.
But I may just do that for the day and come back or something.
It's like thirty dollars additional on top of it.
We leave the fifth for South Carolina, so.
And then the first weekend in October will be the, uh.
I could drive down in the morning and come.
Like Thursday, Friday, Saturday, Sunday conference, and pretty much for every session, you go get an hour of training.
I can drive down.
What is, and I was trying to look at Dave, what is, what are the requirements to get up to advanced register? I'll try to look at it, was there like an essay writing or something?
Yeah, it's nothing.
Okay.
I mean, literally, I wrote about my first year on the school.
Okay, okay.
This time, it was another essay, and I wrote about dealing with the transgenderish, I mean, it's all dealing with, and you read two, I read two books each time, um, you know, off the reading list, um, I know that the, the master level is forty hours, and I'm thinking the advanced level is maybe thirty-six hours.
Is it thirty-six above sixteen that we did, or is it?
The inclusive of the sixteen.
Okay, okay.
But they have other things during the year.
Yes, like the intermediate attending regionally, which we as a board have never gone to, we attempted to, but didn't happen, um, so, you know, but I've often said, even with education background, stepping into this role is so much different than being an educator, and you learn so much through the training.
And they'll come here to do things too, so if there's specific things that we want to look at.
Well, I mean.
She's been, so I forget which one it was, but one of them told me that in October, because I mentioned something about me, I think I remember it, I don't want to come out there anymore, I want all the same information, I mean, that's, something maybe we should think about banning.
And they do have lots of the seventy-five dollar video training that we did with student evaluation in the, um, in the constituent squares, but.
That are in addition to the essential training videos.
Yes, yes, all of them above.
But the conference was beneficial, there were a lot of interesting classes and ideas that were given, so, I enjoyed that a lot.
Lots of, lots of learning, and just simply networking with other board members that, from other parts of the state, and this is what we're doing, like, you make those connections in the board, yeah, wow, that's like, whoa, they've already been done that.
I wish there was a training session up with that education plus, and that a bunch of superintendents and board members.
Yes, superintendents are, um, very much, so, very important, I believe.
Okay, so this gets us to the board goals, which is going to be something that we need to set up, because I don't think the board has had specific goals, have they?
Other than the CSIP, there's not really been established those things that you want to accomplish, see accomplished or work for.
Right, and I did bring my CSIP goals somewhere there in here. So, I thought that we would look at those, the CSIP goals, and, uh, then decide what we want to do from those, or if there's something else that you want to, uh, focus on, but I think it's important for us as a board to take the goals that the school has already set and expand on those and zero in, so that we can help them meet those, those specific goals, um, as well, so, some of you said you brought, you brought your CSIP, they start on page ten are the major goals, but we've got three, right, that we are focusing on, and so that's really on page twelve. Um, when I was looking at goal three, I thought that our, uh, the app that we had talked about was really gonna help hit on that goal, because it's enhancing the communication and allowing parents maybe to get more involved, because they'll be identified and given information and so forth, uh, and help to have better outreach, but we've talked about the app, and we've never decided on that yet either.
Do you and G and Renee have any code that you sent us on the app, you know, in response to pros and cons and questions and costs and?
I believe that was in the board package, the superintendent's board.
We got that.
You do have that, okay.
And they were here for our discussion, yeah.
Now, part of the success of that app is divided and used by the.
The community board.
Teachers.
Our district's employees.
Because it has, right now, we have so many different choices that the teachers use, they're all great, but, you know, parents get confused, because they don't know if they're getting all the information, and, um, so that's the key, is, is the teachers and staff been real open to this app, or?
Um, there's not, not been a lot of discussion on that yet.
Because the discussion has been here with us.
Okay.
It's still in the thinking.
Thinking, talking.
Yeah.
You know, I do know that with paying those folks that I consider reporters, I think is what they're, and that what they're called, reporters?
Messenger.
They're the ones that get the information up to central office to have the messenger put together, I mean, they would, they would still keep their role, but their role would be now putting information on the app, so it would be the teacher's responsibility to get the information to their reporters, and then their reporters to put it on the app, if that, if that makes sense, and then, you know, with food service, you know, food service had to be committed to getting all the menus online, and there's gonna be, it's gonna be a, a big learning curve and a big job.
Do we know what type of? I mean, I, I like the idea, do we know what type of want, if I got a better word, I don't know if I can word it, from, uh, we really know that?
No, we don't.
Well, maybe, when you guys go down to the conference too, I'm sure they'll have more sessions on that, most likely, and then you can hear, you know, how they've used it, and what their success has been like.
Communication was one of the most important things on the community service.
And I want to tell you this, that when I went, Dr. Isaacs and I went up to this most recent MSBA, Mostpara, which is Missouri, uh, Public Relations School of Officials or something of that nature, and you'd be surprised, even the smaller districts that have a PR type person, that, that have, I don't want to say training in that, but the conferences that I went to, the sessions I went to, we had, um, several districts in the city that were smaller, but yet they had people, that's all they did, they, they controlled the app, not only that, they monitored social media.
Yes.
And when something negative was put on by the school district, everyone come together and put some different information out there that, that would get the facts to people rather than the conjecture and the hearsay and things that get spread around.
Was it employee or like?
They, it started out as a volunteer, I'm trying to think, Afton, thank you, the Afton, uh, person that I spoke with started as a parent volunteer, and then they finally, she. And then they finally, she was staying at home with her child, I believe, and at halftime now, she's on full time.
Didn't that reflect, Jeff, with you, your experience at the, at the conference last October?
With the app though, is there a way to measure if it's clicked on or shared to see how many parents are actively engaged?
Yes.
There is.
And I think, you know, the younger generation is definitely gonna go off for that, but it's like, like my mom's age that, you know, I have to help return her iPad on sometimes, you know, that may record. Uh-huh. I'll tell what I do.
This is Erickson.
Yeah.
And I'm not saying we have to add that, I'm just saying.
No, no, I'm just, I'm just trying, just talking through it. I just, I would like to see, you know, the, if we could put a, a survey of some sort out there, you know, I mean, Survey Monkey's relatively easy, but, you know, just to see what type of, of want there would be for it. I don't say, I keep saying want, that's not the right word.
No, it's the right word.
But I know there are.
Desire, yeah, desire. So I like the idea. I like the all-in-one functionality. I like everything goes funnels to this, and, you know, if we can put everything on there or links to things, you know, whether it be that, or the lunch, paying lunch bills, I think, putting all that in one, that's a great idea. But I also want to do something that the public feels like they need.
And they're gonna use.
Exactly.
Utilizations, the.
The idea though is, they have to phone with them all the time.
Yes, yes.
You know, and they're, they're gonna be able to know almost immediately things, instead of having to go sit down and, you know, look through my emails.
Less of that, listen to, you know, and granted, I know it won't replace the robocalls, but I'm sure something, I know things won't go away with that.
My favorite thing on that robocall though is if you did not get this message, please call.
Yes.
That's what I know.
I can get you about twenty-five hundred followers pretty quick if we just put snow day cancellation on the app, on Twitter, everybody over there. And I, I a hundred percent agree with what Rob said, communication's key. You know, I believe around, I have that written down, it's coming out to you in the board packet upcoming, communications conference I'm going to sponsored Northwest, that some folks are coming down, talk to us about communication plans, strategic planning for communication plan. So we're gonna try to get to that and get some information back to you. And like I said, sponsored by Northwest, and nine school districts are going to it. So that's kind of part of communicating, which goes along with our CSIP, is what, how can we better communicate with folks?
And I mean, if they picture this, it'd almost be replacing that messenger, budgetary line anyways, so.
And that's what most of the school districts that were discussing their apps, they've gotten away from even their websites, their robocalls, you know, their newsletters, et cetera, because that's what.
You can move people toward it, you're right. If you start limiting.
And I figure that, figure that I'm part of your mother's, you're right, well, I am, and.
But my mother uses it, and she's in her seventies.
And, you know, I may not necessarily use it, but I don't necessarily need it, because I don't have my kids, but I would use it if I needed to find something out.
Yeah, sure.
You know.
Well, grandparents' day, when is that?
Yes.
I can look and see and, you know, get times, and it's, and you're right, it would be up to people in the buildings to set those things, but we're doing it on our website. So if I'm gonna do it on my app and it's gonna hit more, then that'd be better, and it'd be easier.
How would that affect the future websites? Are they hosted separately from the district, or how is that?
We talked about that. It is hosted a little differently, but yet they're gonna migrate everything over still to the website.
So that, so they're.
The website would still be there, and all the pages that we have would be linked to the new website. But the functionality of the website's gonna be a little different, because it's gonna be driven by the app.
Yeah.
If that makes sense.
Yes.
To provide clarity to what you're asking, the, the teachers' website are not part of, Wix is what we use for running the district. The teacher websites, they each have their own through my teacher pages, and we're doing a hyperlink to that is, that's going to.
It's linked to us.
And so that link, and kind of following up the question that you asked as far as the need, we asked that question on the CSIP survey, kind of like, how do you get your information? Number one was infinite campus, robocalls, emails, and Facebook, which was kind of surprising, was down below, but like what you guys are saying, the key to driving that is keep, is in our hands, is, is gotta have relevant information.
Yeah, you can't have some.
That needs to know, I mean, if you go to News Channel Five, you're like, well, that's the same news story from two days ago.
Yeah.
It doesn't have to be that updated, but it needs to be, which is, that's a difficult thing on a school site, is when you're teaching or when you're working.
Well, and that's where having that, you know, the, the reporters that you had mentioned, how having them following that information, but then them updating that, is that, you know, to where in the future they are a full-time position, and that's okay, you know. Mrs. Stevenson has something, and, you know, she wants to put out that her kids did that are great, or, you know, anybody, you know, I mean, they follow them and then they put it on there, so they're not getting interrupted in their school data to post something.
It's almost like, it has to be an extra duty.
Yeah, right, yeah.
And here's one, I went to, down at the conference, it was a small school, and they were talking, I'm doing the analytics piece, the key times that they have to send out stuff, and they're like, we work our hours different, are from four to eight at night. And then literally, like, getting up in the morning.
People can look at their.
You know, it's like weird hours, like six to eight, cause they, during the middle of the day, moms and dads aren't looking at this.
No, they're working.
And so when they send out an email blast or something on Facebook, they'll do it on purpose. The school, like, six-thirty, right after something. And there's analytics that support, hey, do, and that's how they try to do that, from the extra duty person, hey, we're working in the evening.
I can tell you, Jen, our, my wife and I are business, we're an internet big business, and we've found through studies and from consultants, my business, I work from like seven to midnight almost every night, and the next morning, we have all our sales, cause people, that's when they're.
On the computer.
When they shop.
Well, and it goes back to exactly what you're saying. The key word is, is humanizing. As a district, we have to humanize ourselves. People have to be able to relate what you said about, you know, Mary taking pictures and getting that out. People want to see their kid. They want to know that, hey, my kid's involved in something, not just sitting there with a lecture tape notes, but my, we're, we're humanizing ourselves. And they said, and believe it or not, the biggest hit, and I believe it was Afton, said they had in one day, was when a second grade teacher announced that she was having a baby, and her kids helped her announce it in her class. And they took that and put it out on their app, and it, and Twitter, and the retweets that it got, was, cause you humanized that.
Right.
Rather than desensitize the public to work as paper pencil, they see that we're a family, and, and that's when they follow you for that information. So it's exactly right. How do we, and that's the key question, do we get that information out and consistently get it out? Cause that's what we do. When I'm in the buildings and I take pictures and tweet it out, I'm not always in that building, but teachers are. And that's what was spun through their PR person. Teacher take a picture, and send it to them, and they had it immediately, which helped. So we just have to get our reporters reporting, and.
I think what'll help, really, that our school, it's a community thing. But I, I was interested, now I knocked on so many doors and talked to so many people, and there was parents with an age group that aren't in kindergarten yet, and then people that didn't have kids in school, they didn't care. Didn't care about those groups.
That's right.
But our little town, I mean, that's what our town is, is our school, you know, we don't really have anything else. So to get them engaged, especially when future stuff's coming up.
Right.
You know.
Plus, over years of negative press.
Yeah.
In the local, state, national world.
World, you're right.
Well, yeah.
And, and, and you're correct, but see, even with an app, they don't have to have a log on Infinite Campus.
Right.
And they just have the app on their phone, they can.
And Grandma and Grandpa in Seattle can see what Little Susie's doing now, too, you know.
And what I liked about the app that we were looking at, and there's several apps, the Blackboard, it's hugely expensive, and I think it was Excelsior Springs is using that one, talked to their communications person, and visited on how you liked that. And we also visited about Aftogee, and several people around the table, Tom Mussey was one, we talked about, man, we love that. The only thing, the only downfall they had with that was the same things we talked about. You can't pay your bill on it to, for food service. It's the only negative that I heard from the people that actually had Aftogee come to their district and talk to their board about it. And so again, I go all the way back to, it's only gonna be as effective as the information you put on there.
You get a PayPal going through there.
Yes.
Well, and, you know, if, if that's, if that's a, I don't speak for them, but if that's a complaint.
You can still do that.
That they, they put in there at some point.
Right, and we still do that through.
Paypams.
What?
We have online payments, Paypams.
Paypams, okay.
We have a lot of parents that use that.
And we can link that to it.
Yeah.
You just can't do it from our app.
Right. Well, and to me, the, the financial aspect, I mean, to me, it was kind of a trade-off, because you wouldn't be needing the messenger.
Well, you wouldn't need the messenger, you're replacing with that, and to think of it, the amount of information that you're getting out with that app, how much would that cost to put on the paper? You know, if you think of it that way, how much would it cost to get all that information out in paper every, every day, how we want to look at it? I mean, it's, it's thick as, it costs you by the thickness.
Yeah, yeah, exactly.
So I mean, appropriate terms.
You don't have to pay for coloring.
That's right.
And the other thing you had said is that certain information, like phone numbers accepted, would have to actually be pushed into it.
Correct.
So when students enroll, et cetera, could that not just simply occur at that time?
It could, but, you know, that's, when had Steve Murray, Kathy Ringo's conversation, they, it's a lot easier, Infinite Campus talks to basically.
Right.
School reach, lack for a better word, pushes those numbers automatically.
Right.
Whereas with the app, someone is gonna have to download them physically and keep it updated, which is another task. But, I mean, I'm not saying it can't be done, but yet someone's gonna have to do it. And it might be something we can move toward in a year or so, after we get the app rolling, if this is the direction the district wants to go, or the board wants to go, we can add that later and then cut off if we don't want to pay for that phone service. That's, I think that's more of a technology question than an erring question, cause I'm not for sure at the cost of that.
And I like the idea that we're looking at communication with our current parents. Like Rob was saying, we have a lot of parents who aren't, don't have school reach kids yet, so how are we gonna reach them? And then, of course, we have a lot of older retired community, and how are we gonna reach them? Cause like Rob said, we do need them still. You know, they are very much part of our community. We need them whenever bond issues come up. So what are the plans to reach those folks if we go with the app?
Well, we're not really reaching them now.
Yeah.
They're the people that will vote. I don't, I would say they're not being reached really at all now, so I don't.
Those that take the leader.
Right, they get the messenger.
They'll get the messenger, they probably look at to see if they have a grandchild in there, and the trash it goes.
And to be honest with you, the, the older population, I receive phone calls from saying, why are you wasting my tax dollars on that? And then I have retired teachers calling saying, hey, I love that you do that, cause I still get to see the kids and see what's going on at school and stay involved. And, you know, then I have the parents that call and say, hey, I love seeing my kid in there. And then I have parents calling saying, how come my kid's never in there? So, I mean, there's always gonna be a group of the population that you can't either reach or get to, and I think that's part of, you know, being on the board meetings, is trying to communicate with people so they see what's going on.
But, but there are more and more older generation people starting to use Facebook and things like that. Right, and they're, they have to learn it, just like the rest of us, and they're, they're a little maybe slower at jumping on the bandwagon, but I think they are.
Yeah, and I would say seventy-year-olds, I would say, maybe not eighty-year-olds. I'm not seventy yet, Angie, by the way. Why that look?
Did not say.
But, you know, that older generation is going to have that still as we get old.
But those things will pop up for them too, and they can, parents can choose which way they want to be, I, be notified too, right?
Well, they can choose what they want to watch. You can watch the district stream, which was every building, or you can just watch the primary building, or you can just watch, you can pick which building you want to keep on the main feed.
And that can be changed, right?
Yes.
As they.
Like, you can watch the entire district.
Right.
You know, but my interest would be, as a parent, my kids are in junior high, I wouldn't want to watch the primary or elementary. But from a superintendent's perspective, or school administrator, I want all of them.
So is there, can you separate like athletics?
Yes.
Like, you know.
Yes.
All of a sudden, you can start bringing in some of the community, the more athletic events or extracurricular activities when they start seeing all this great.
And what I really liked about that app, that I didn't see on the Blackboard or other apps, is, just like what you're saying, let's say the band is competing at St. Genevieve, and you're not for sure where it is, you slide over, you're looking at athletics, and you click band, and, and it actually has, it's linked to Google Maps, you click on it, and it gives you driving directions. So there's a lot of functionality built within the app that goes well beyond just communicating with parents. It's a useful tool also.
Well, one of the apps that they talked about at the conference had the bus routes on there too, and they could look and see where the bus was that morning.
And the bus had to be GPS linked for that, but yes.
But it was really cool. They, they talked about how kids were worried they'd missed the bus, but like pull up their app and go, oh, it's not here yet.
It's not here yet.
Which I thought that was kind of neat, but.
One of the things to answer Mrs. Wishy's question, that they talked about at the conference, was to try to address that very issue. And once again, this was coming from a person that does it full-time in their districts, but it's, in addition to monitoring the app, creating that, they create the news. And we kind of did something similar in my first couple of years with the junior, like after sports. We, all the coaches had to like write up a thing, tell us the story of the game, and actually Mr. Falker kind of collected all that and would send it to the leader, Warren, about every two weeks. It was wrong with junior, and it would have like, you know, it was like at the time that Sam, I guess it was the kids that graduated a couple of years ago, Taylor and that group that won a Taylor Hassel, it was that group kind of coming through, and wrote, we wrote news stories and put it in, and the leader, we made the news.
Sure.
And they printed it, and, but it's.
But you can handle it.
Hard to keep up on that thing. It's like one of those things, you, it falls to the wayside, but literally, they will make like, hey, a district news line, literally by the week, and create news stories. Well, and they'll send it to the leader, to the journals or whatever, well, those news reporters, they cut corners, they're like, copy, paste.
Right.
And they're like, we control what's coming out here, cause we're doing their work for them. And having, but once again, that takes time, but that's how, to me.
Right.
They have to see that the older, I read the leader every week.
I do too.
But has to be, in order to be cost-effective, embedded within the leader, and the, the good news and the local and then the sports.
The more positive things you get in there, the better, not waiting for the negative things to pop up and then have to counter, act to them.
And that's John's word, control, the district begins to control what's being said.
And if you send it to the radio station, they'll use it as plugs during dead air.
Yeah, and they'll use what.
But they don't, they get nothing from Hillsborough.
That was something that stood out to me. I was like, wow, they control, they're like, they literally copy and paste what we say, but, so they'll do whatever, they literally send out the district news.
That's your job now. Would that, huh, you feel like the dead air with Hillsborough news? You have to send it in, but yes, if it's sent in, they can use it. You are the reporter now.
You're the volunteer.
Yes.
Congratulations.
You've been well told.
So, she didn't accept it.
No, she didn't.
I make sure I cross no lines. So that we have individuals within each building who are responsible for the data put together for the messenger.
Yes, ma'am.
Who send it up to central office.
Yes, ma'am.
So they would essentially be in charge of the app.
Correct.
For each building.
Yes. And then there'd be other people like Mrs. Jackson, she would, or Mrs. Orchard would get information up for food service, and Mr. Marino would do athletics, and there'd be other people involved of, but currently you are paying the messengers.
Right.
And, I mean, to me, you don't need to take that away from folks, because, you know, also from hourly employees, and we, we shouldn't do that, but yet.
But you need them.
The cost of printing the messenger was, that I showed you, was not including paying But yet, the cost of printing the messenger was, that I showed you, was not including paying those people, that was excluded from that.
So, um, that's one of our ways to help our communication goal.
I like the idea of controlling what goes out.
Right.
I really do, and I like the idea of, you were, you were saying, I don't remember if it was the school district or a meeting you'd been to, you had someone following social media, I don't want to say trolling, but following your native PR, to respond to it and get the correct information out. Is that something our building folks would be able to do, or is that?
To be honest with you, um, I want to step back, we do, I mean, Dr. Isaacs and I don't want to reveal our sources.
Right.
We have some employees that just do that out of the goodness of our heart, saying, hey, parents are, I'll give you a prime exam, a prime example of an issue we had a couple of weeks ago.
Yeah, I saw something on Facebook just last week, I think.
That is the one I'm talking about.
All right.
And it was totally incorrect. Um, and so, we found out who it was.
Right.
And we called the parent, and I spoke to the parent specifically and said, tell me what's going on here. We saw this on social media, and you haven't called us, how can we fix this?
Right.
And come to find out, I think it was a family member down the line that had posted some information that was inaccurate. And that incident never happened. But yet, I'm reading down through here, all these two hundred and fifty-one people that don't have a, don't have the facts. But yet, I, I don't do, I'm on Facebook, but I don't do Facebook, you know, I just, I don't follow it, I don't keep up with it, and my brother calls it spacebook.
I haven't resolved it.
But yeah, to answer your question, we had, I think, I called the parent, my junior high administration called the parent, and the father and the student came in the next day, clarified everything, talked with the family member that posted it, but you know, the damage is already done.
It's done, right.
There was.
Two hundred and fifty-one, two hundred and fifty-one.
Of many people in the community, with many different views.
Yes, I don't, I didn't ever see a retraction, but that was brought to us by an employee who saw it. You need to see this.
Right.
So we do have people that are trolling social media, but normally not during the school day. But it happened, that post came at night, I think.
So that, oh, all right, I know what you're talking about.
It didn't happen.
That never happened.
Never happened.
Never happened.
Ever happened, no. I can tell you more off camera, you're taking the session. You know, so those are the things that we try to do as a district, and I want to go back to making that very valid point, that by knowing and handling it, to me, it was more important that I haven't dealt with a parent, not the two hundred and fifty-one people, because there's always going to be two hundred and fifty-one people that have something negative to say, and you can't deal with that. But, since it was student-related, we could get on there anyway and say, hey, this isn't, you need to dial that back. My job was to fix it with mom and dad, and so that, that helped there. Uh, the communication piece, and I love what we said a while ago about, um, you know, controlling the message. And doing that, and I enjoyed listening to those other individuals talking about the same thing, humanizing, controlling the message, but also leading the message.
Right.
Not just controlling how it goes, but being a leader within the districts around us, and delivering highly effective and appropriate information.
But that almost ends up being a full-time position to do that, and that, that's why those schools had PR personnel.
Well, I just want to say this, and I don't want to offend any of our staff by any means, but when I heard at the last board meeting that we were buying an app to produce the messenger, I thought, you know, I think with our own people, we have, have this, that misinformation that, it can't be tamed to that.
But that just shows you how important communication is.
Well, and the honest straightforward, the communication people said, you're going to make mistakes, but you get it out there, this is what happened, and this is how we're fixing it. And you control even the negative stuff, because you get it out there first, instead of trying to do the politician speaking out of both sides.
I think people will learn to start going to that, instead of paying attention maybe to some of those other outside sources that, you know, might get it wrong.
And the two hundred and fifty-one, they all weren't negative.
No.
I think maybe fifty of them were positive.
Right.
Saying, hey, send me, I don't know.
They were interesting reads.
Sure.
That was a good word for it.
Interesting reads.
And as the goals, I mean, I put the honest straightforward communication down as number one, because I do feel within the community, within staff, you know, we have to, well, improve on the honest communication that's out there.
Well, I was thinking trust and transparency, you know. It all goes hand in hand. And you can say the word transparency, but if you're not doing it, then, um, you know, you don't know who to believe, who to trust, et cetera, and then you start thinking of other things, so. Now, do you think this app, and maybe this is a different goal, because I'm looking at engagement. Do you, in your, and I have my own opinion, do you think this will help grow our engagement with our families, our students, our parents?
I think you would be able to communicate engagement, and what I mean by that is, parents will have a better opportunity of being informed of what's going on. But, and that's one thing, in the CSIP survey, and Dr. I can talk about that, there are a lot of barriers to why people aren't involved in school. A lot of it, and the number one is time. Parents, you know, work, taking, you know, needing two incomes to work now, they don't have the time, uh, and I think low on the to-do list was they'd have a way. They might have only one vehicle, and husband's at work, and mom can't get here, and there are a lot of that conversation.
There are a lot of parents who have those barriers, but if it's important to them, they still do it.
Don't disagree.
We have our youth programs, we have our sporting programs, we have our inquiries, we have parents who have those limitations and are still involved.
Sure. I don't know if it's going to grow engagement, I think it'll give an opportunity for people to see ways to be more involved, if that makes sense. It's a different way of communicating what we have going on up here.
Well, it makes it more available to them too, because just like the video for the board meetings, if they can't come, well, they don't have to come anymore. They can watch it, and fast forward through the parts that, you know, they don't want to watch, whatever, but at least you made it available to them, and they could see what was happening.
I think another piece to it, I mean, there was a second objective to that on goal three, was clean out outreach activities. Communicating through that and having things for the community, I don't know what that would be with us.
The primary building, with unveiling, I mean, there's things that buildings, and that was part of why that was in there, and I think you were, I was ex officio a member of that committee on the CSIP, but I think Dr. I and Mrs. Rain were the leaders of the committee. The focus was, what are the buildings going to do for the outreach? And I've seen a lot more of that this year. I have administrators on Twitter that have gone, Mr. Allison, I don't know what's happened, he's just a Twitter junkie now. He's talking all the time about things going, but he wasn't that way a year or two ago, he was not that at all. So that outreach, you know, is coming, and in full circle, I think the board's doing that with videos and trying to educate, communicate with the public.
Well, to clean up the community from the intermediate, that was interesting this past week. Saw the signs, saw the kids out in the community. My mother's neighborhood, the people that were there, and they were the older people, they came out to see what was going on, because they saw the bus and all the kids, and so that gave them a chance to interact.
And I can tell you, at the radio station, we troll Twitter after major meetings to find scores, to find major things that happen. So if these were out there, it'd be much easier for us to find.
Well, and there's been times that I had wanted, just to find an activity to go to in the evening to make, you know, some PR in a building, and I had so much difficulty finding it on the website. And so, it's like, I finally gave up because, and I'm assuming this.
Tomorrow night is the intermediate school week.
Yes.
And that is, that's a fun night to go and hang out with the kid, you know, mom and dad and the kids, and you can have hammers and hot dogs and pie throwing contests and, you know, like Mr. Rain now or whoever, and it's just a fun night.
Yeah, and the art show.
Yes.
Is at the City Center.
Right.
So, you know, those things are important, and, you know, getting more parents and families. My granddaughter's school did a food truck show up just in the parking lot Friday night.
We have that coming this Friday, which that.
I mean, this was for parents and kids, and, you know, it was a social thing for everybody, and the food truck sold out. You know, the, pardon is that, or the school got ten percent of the sale, but how easy is that? Now, with this app, would it be something that, I'm thinking, PTO, the HTC club, Spanish club, would they be able to utilize it as well to push their information out?
They can make a page.
They can get, it's, we control what they put on there.
Right.
And it has, and it's similar to like, students posting for National Honor Society. The advisor approves it before it goes onto the page. So yes, there are ways of doing that, and there are limited permissions you can give those individuals. I didn't ask, I mean, how many, the total number of users you can have.
Right.
And I'm pretty sure it's basically unlimited, you can have as many as you want, but I'll ask for sure.
You know, because I get different text messages, different tweets, different emails from all these different clubs, from all these different ways. That would be helpful for me as a parent, just to have that.
Well, couldn't coaches use it too, to send to their, their teams, you know, practice has been canceled and, or whatever, or?
They'd normally text the kids.
Right, but then it would be.
But yeah, it would be.
That's for the parents to know as well, because sometimes go home.
Right, they'll know that the kid's going home, and not have to call Johnny and say, hey, what about practice?
So any negatives to this, to some of the?
I mean, we're all positive here, and, you know, that was.
The only thing that I would be concerned about initially would be hiring a PR person to be in charge of it, because if we're going to try to pass a bond issue, I don't think we need to add another staff position. And if we can do it within the existing staff, then.
I think as it grows and the line.
Yeah. And I think, I think keeping the reporters pushing stuff in, they're going to be the quote, quote, PR people, I think is what we need to do, and then, like I said, as it grows.
As it grows.
We can get opportunities. Involved and see what to do with it.
Can you comment on the post, or is this just a, no, okay, so it's strictly the school controlling the conversation? That's it.
I think what we can do, and I mean, there's, there's some talented people that I've met in Hillsboro that are either stay-home moms or want to raise their kids, that would be able to reach out, help us, that have communication backgrounds or PR backgrounds, and that's how it started at App, so, I mean, we're, I'm, reach out.
Someone in the elementary, I think. A communication degree.
So there's a lot of things we can do as a district, and I agree with you, we don't need to hire a PR person.
Not yet.
If you wanted to go gangbusters and have tons of information out there, that's what you need, but we're not at that point yet, we might be able to handle it ourselves.
All those computer gigs.
Mr. Isaacs?
Well, two things, is, in or with a stipend position type thing, where it's a two thousand dollar commitment as opposed to, you're absolutely right. A salary even benefits. One of the things too, just, this idea is in my head, and I always, I teach a class at the special school, and their administration, and I walk by, because they have a bunch of pamphlets out there. It's like an education center, but, and I've taken a bump, lunch I'm going to give to Mr. Whitehead, but literally, like every week, or twice a month, they have community, it's at night, like at seven thirty, because they've sometimes bumped me, and there'll be twenty-five parents. One of the classes is, your grandchild has behavior problems, as, or has autism. So it's people, it's not just parents, but it's like, how to deal with that as a community member, as grandpa and grandma, as mom and dad. You, your child is going to start kindergarten, and they're literally nighttime classes for the community. One of the other, I think, those, during the course of, maybe, I don't know why I heard it, but at least Miss Petru is there, a doc, of organizing an event that dealt with college scholarships, they did something for parents, talking about working with somebody who was a mom and dad, they didn't have their high school diploma. In a GED-type situation for community members, but doing, kind of thinking outside the box to draw people that normally aren't coming to school for those classes, which is, you know, and we have some of those pamphlets, I'm going to show Mr. Whitehead, but doing some of those things, but they're going to have to be in the evening and, you know.
We talked about that once before, that intermediate had done that, and we didn't have a lot of turnout for that, but it could be the subject matter. You know, maybe we didn't have the right thing to pique their interest, I don't know. You know, but we have to find what the needs are that people would be interested in.
I had mentioned maybe trying to grow the after-school tutoring by getting the parents there also to have programs for them, you know, about.
Well, I get some volunteers to come in. I know a church in Arnold works with their school, with Rockport Elementary, and a couple nights a week, they have volunteers that will help tutor. You know, and they just work on homework with them, and it's right after school. And they, they might feed them hot dogs or something too, but, you know, so it's a little babysitting, childcare for a couple of hours, but mom and dad don't have to do the homework necessarily, because Billy doesn't stay focused and loses his school with mom, so somebody else he might not. But it was, it's been a good program, and they've had some good turnout too for that.
Yeah, but there's people in the community that would do that.
Right, we have lots of retired teachers around here too that would come up and help with that. Or just, you know, grandmas and grandpas, to sit and read with somebody, just to read a book with them, because kids don't have that a lot of times. Okay, so, what kind of goal do we want to write then, here? What are we, what are we looking for? We've talked about several things. Do we want a goal to, to develop an app, or do we want to, I mean, he's looked into it and?
I think the goal should be, you know, not necessarily have the word app in it, the app could be the solution, a solution.
Okay.
I think the goal should be communication-focused.
There you go.
Grow communication, enhance communication, something of that nature, because then it is pretty open-ended, and we can do a lot of things with that type of goal.
Well.
But we probably want something specific.
Basically, in your, in your CSIP plan, which is your comprehensive school improvement plan, you have a goal to address this communication. What you want to do is, is a board develop basically a sub-goal of helping the district achieve.
Meet that.
Or the board, the board collectively achieving that goal. What can you do to achieve that goal as a board? Because see, as, as a CSIP committee, we can't tell you what you need to do to help advance that goal. We can only say as a district, what can our buildings and administration do?
So, the action that we take will help them meet that goal of improving school-community relations, or increasing the number of families and community members to volunteer and participate.
Something like combining communication district-wide, or. Trying to think of some words there.
Not really communication so much though.
I guess it directly matters to how, right, the student will, the board will, the board.
The board will, implement, um. A senior communication program.
That's pretty broad, I don't know what that would mean, what that would include, we'd have to.
So that's community involvement, so you basically want to look.
Because we're enhancing parent and student and community involvement by implementing an app.
Or you could say, improve communication measures. I mean, that gives you still a variety of what you want to do in app, or you want to do a communications plan, or you want to do more, deliver postcards home. I mean, there's, there's different things you can do as a board. So you're wanting to focus on three point two with the community relations piece and focus specifically on communication?
Because that's not, this one's going more voluntary.
Right. So you're wanting to take three point two, develop a sub-goal for the board. As a board, we value school-community relations, and we would like to grow how we communicate with the public, or improve positive communication within the public, something along those lines. Which still leaves it broad enough where you can decide how you want to do that as you go throughout the year. Now, if you want it to be a smart goal, you're going to have to put a, you know, you're going to measure, you have to be measurable, which that isn't, it has to have a timeline, which that doesn't.
Well, the app is measurable.
True, if you specifically go with the app.
Right.
But if we want to do other communication devices or opportunities or things of that nature as a board, you want to meet the goal, but not just meet it, you want to exceed it. It might be beyond an app.
I mean, infinite campus is measurable. We know how many users there are, we know if they log in, we know how often, you know, so the app would be measurable as well.
Sure, utilization.
Right.
You could also say, X amount of community events, maybe you want to hold X amount of community events, bring the community in for this or that.
Sure.
Yeah, that's, that would be an achievable.
That would be measurable based on the number of events attended. Then I don't have the guy at the door with the clicker clicking.
No, 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 we're going to have X amount of events.
We're going to have the event, not necessarily other, how many people show up, it's about having the host of the event.
Yes, yes.
Sure, and I, PTO is just running, I approve their flyers about once a week for the things they're doing within the building. I wish all of our buildings had that level of active involvement, and I'm saddened to know that pretty soon, they're going to be moving to the elementary.
Well, they're doing a combined PTO next year.
Good, okay, because I was talking to them, and it was about, hey, we're moving to the elementary, and how are we still going to keep the involvement down here?
They're balancing. They're balancing, they're balancing activities between the two buildings, I think, if I understand. I think, based on what I saw there, we're gonna focus on one activity a month. And that's a lot of activities, so, in the whole year.
And I wanna be honest, that is one thing that even the administrators visit with me about, is we have so much going on that it's almost walking on each other.
Mm-hmm, it is.
You know, that we can't, the elementary's conflicting with the junior highs, conflicting with the high school, and like, the, the PTO wanted to do a father-daughter dance and the, and I think the high school beat them to it through the FCC LA.
Right.
So we talked about developing a calendar that the public can use.
You had the carnival, PTO trivia, there was something like...
There's just so much. It's almost like we, we do so many things that we don't do a lot of things well.
Right.
'Cause we have so much going on, people, they get crossed up, so we're talking about how, and that was a huge discussion, we want a calendar that the public can see, so if the PTO wants to do a fundraiser, they know, okay, well, we shouldn't do, we shouldn't do our candle, our cookie dough fundraiser here, because the week before, the band is doing their band cards. We might wanna wait a week, you know, that type of...
So the activities director, Eddie, is not a district, he's just high school?
Eddie does not direct the outside fundraisers.
Outside fundraisers.
Like band boosters and the other booster clubs, they're all...
That's one thing, he doesn't control the PTO, he doesn't control the...
Which I knew that, they don't control, but I figured that there was still a big calendar that...
Isn't Eddie's responsibilities basically athletics?
Activities.
His activities, his activities.
He does activities, so it'd be band and cheerleading and...
But even...
The cheerleaders were doing a fundraiser, that was on the calendar.
It used to be. On his, on his calendar, but he doesn't, so if, if he's got cheerleading and pommes and soccer going on, and they're coming down to get the younger students involved, he's not gonna know that I'm already doing a fundraiser at the elementary. See what I'm saying? So then parents are getting hit.
So his activities are relegated to the high school, basically, is that, I mean, the activities he's in charge of?
Junior high, high school.
Junior high, please. And that's what we're trying to do.
In terms of fundraising, they reach out.
Fundraising, I had to realize that. I thought there was a school calendar that everything was on. I have four calendars. So it would not...
No.
There should be.
That's what we're working on. But, again, we're looking at like our PD calendar, it's online. Our professional development, uh, utilization of this room, you can log on and click on calendars and see who's gonna be in this room at what time, and there's only two people in the three, Jana, Bethan, and Wendy Seiwick, that can add names to that list.
Mm-hmm.
They control it, so we know what's going on. Um, so we're trying to figure out how to develop that without expending any funds for a new calendar, software system.
You know, I think that's a goal we should look at, because as a parent, I'd be important six different directions, because different clubs aren't talking to each other, I could be at three different events in one night.
So it's not just external...
Find out the day before.
It's not just external communication, it's internal communication.
Well, that's what I was...
So that's why you just have communication there.
Right.
That's what I talked about with our school and the community.
Right.
'Cause that would kinda help to cover both aspects. But, and we could just list some of those ideas.
You know, a catch-all calendar would be...
A catch-on calendar.
I just figured I hadn't found that one yet.
Who's that, the staff?
When I was teaching, I had one.
Oh, I know, we have a calendar.
We had access to one that I could see when other grade levels. So I knew what conflict or would not...
And also, I mean, I have a document before the fall, from September, August to December, then from January to May, of all the activities going on. Band, cheerleading, so I can, in my office, know, okay, I'm, I'm gonna go out and see Cross Country today. I know what's going on.
Do administrative, other administrators?
That comes from the athletics activities department, but what that doesn't do is schedule the PTO fundraiser.
Right, there's no fundraiser, there's no Hillsborough Touchstone Club fundraiser or Mount Rice, anything.
So are those done at individual buildings then?
Yes.
The principals take responsibility or...
Building coordinator.
That, or like with the HTC, it's, you know, Freeman is the advisor, you know.
And then he goes through Mr. Moreno, but again, that's building. What we're having trouble with is not necessarily the building fundraiser, it's the crossover of things going on.
Sure.
That causes the problem. So, that communication piece is not just an app, it's also internal communication with school calendar.
Yes. That would be very helpful.
I just started with, the board would like to help improve communication with our school and the community through a variety of ways, and then you can start with listing some of those possible, by developing, you know, a calendar.
Developing a calendar.
Those are some things that we could help focus on.
But I almost see that as ongoing. What I mean by that is your communication changes based upon, one, your audience, and two, your message.
Right.
So we, as a board, I think you say the board will set, this year for the 2016-17 school year, the board will set a priority on communication, both internally and externally with patrons and employees.
Okay.
Period. And then, as a board, okay, how do we wanna accomplish this? We wanna do an app, we wanna do a calendar. That's the first two things, let's work to get that accomplished, and then we'll come back and say, okay, how's that going? What else do we do for communication? What, do we need to do more, hey, you know what, I think as a board, we need to commit some funds to getting a digital sign out in front of the intermediate, one of the flagships of the district. Parents drive by, they see, we can type stuff on instead of having to get the boom truck to change. It's typed in, and we have new messages every day, that's communicating.
That sign down at Dairy Queen, oh my gosh. And at night sometimes.
And so you have that rolling all the time, so you're communicating with your public that way. And so it's how, what message you want, and what audience you wanna reach.
Well, doesn't the high school have like a rolling sign in the cafeteria area and the gardenhouses?
Well, I think it's only like this big and about that long, but yes, it's, and it, it's not, it's about that.
Not big.
It's just a little bitty sign.
That'd be kind of a good place to put another something there during all the athletic events, people could, oh, they're out buying their soda, read that to get...
I've also, I've also seen them like on flat-screen televisions, using that.
Well, and the high school has those too, in there, don't they? Big TVs?
Uh, uh, flags.
Several buildings have those.
If they're intermediate, they have them.
So that's...
Kind of your announcement board or something.
Correct.
Well, classification and...
Yeah, get your board, that was good. Well, this is what I wrote down.
Had to come out my brain. For the 2016-17 school year, the Hillsborough R3 Board of Education will... We're recording it, Bethan, so you can go back and watch it.
Oh, there you go.
All right. So for the 2016-17 school year, uh, the Hillsborough R3 Board of Education will set, uh, communication with the internal and external publics as a priority. And that's where we are, I believe.
Yeah.
And you can add...
Then we can develop what we're, the steps that we're gonna take to make that a priority. But we started with the calendar and the app.
Talking about like the rolling signs and things like that, is there any way that maybe we could get a business or somebody to donate a sign and they could have their little ad or something, you know? Sponsored by such and such.
Like around the school board, how they do that.
Yeah, maybe we could investigate something like that.
Yes. Yeah, we, that board policy on advertising in school, we'd have to evaluate, 'cause I think it says something in there. But I believe that's like the old wooden boards that you paint, hang up, you know, that's not maintained and doesn't look nice, but that would be different. Uh, and that kinda goes back to the video boards they did down at Farmington and Sandwich Inn.
Correct, even the old type, we talked about, put someone like the outfield fence of the baseball field to help cover some of the annual maintenance.
So yes, you know...
There you go, sold one already.
Yes.
They do on their big school board, I remember, I see it every day, just drive in.
I think if we can involve the community in as much of this as possible.
Give them some owner's pride.
Well, the individual companies that were buying our scoreboards through also do those signs.
Well, maybe we should check what they do.
And you can do, it, it's interesting, because I've seen districts with pictures of their kids, actual, it's a digital image, it looks just like something you could take with a camera and put up there. So there's a lot of things you can do about community involvement, women or the veterans, you know, you have the flag actually waving up in there, it's, it's pretty neat, it's really interesting. We picked up that, well, that brochure, it was Daktronics, right? Dr. Isaacson, Daktronics is the company that did that, okay, that's what I thought. So I've listed those three things, app, calendar, and investigate sign. I use the word investigate, 'cause we're not for sure on funding or sponsors or things of that nature.
In regards to the sponsors, and we've talked, 'cause when I was down in Texas, they had a baby map all over the place.
Yes.
But as far as the advertisers, well, it's hard to do for a football thing. And, and like at the junior high, Queens is still getting some mileage of donating the scoreboards way back then. But now with technology, we've talked with Eddie, he's not even doing a video board, but you could put a 54-inch TV above every door in the gym and have a scrolling, 'cause it's different from the old days when they put a Coke sign up, and it's...
Right, it's there.
Yes, hey, if you wanna re-up, there, there are revenue streams, but like Dr., it's the board policy making sure that it's done the right way.
But you could get more advertisers too. Instead of one sign, you could have several.
Those advertisers wanna see more people at the events, yeah, so if you can have various things going on, maybe at the same time, a, a safety fair at a football game where the parents come with their kids and get them fingerprinted or recorded with the police or whatever, and then they stay for the game, I don't know, this thing.
Well, I also think it's great, I mean, we talk about communication as talking to the public, and that's important. I mean, I know, I guess my first year here, and maybe my second, we, I did a, a radio interview on back-to-school, things that were going on, and it, it always kinda seemed to go toward the football team or the basketball team rather than focusing on academics, but, you know, that's also something that we can try to get more of, more radio airtime and go over there and visit with the guys and do recording and...
We do that with other supers from other districts on a regular, regular basis.
I need to get on that list. They didn't invite you back, I wonder what's up with that?
No, they want you on the list.
I appreciate that.
They want you if you call them.
Okay.
I'll mention it.
Tell them I don't wanna talk about sports, I'll talk about academics.
I'll let them know, we'll get you on the rotation.
Talk about the band.
Talk about the band, talk about, you know, the pommes.
There you go.
The fun things.
Okay. So any other thoughts about, um, goals that you'd like to develop? Goal one has to do with, um, environment more than anything, I think, and, uh, performance. Anything from that one? I started backwards, sorry. Any thoughts?
Well, I think we're addressing the healthy, safe, effective environment with the plans that have been given to us. You know, I think we're definitely addressing that by looking at the baseball field, things like that.
It helps out having a retired Hillsborough police officer on staff to help with our safety training for our staff.
What about going down the list, retaining qualified staff? I mean, that's one of our problems with the paras, retaining them. How, what's our turnover like?
Yeah, what's their retention turnover?
Uh, well, I mean, it's kinda hard to judge that this year with your E-CIP plan, um, but we presented to the board a spreadsheet of how many staff members have left over a three-year period due to moves or, um, terminations, things of that nature. We can present that back to the board, of course, that's executive section document, but we can share that with you again. The, the huge issue for our paras is what we pay. I mean, we just don't pay very much.
Or subs?
Nine bucks an hour, or subs.
The day was an issue with subs at the primary.
With the change in insurance, that hourly rate will increase.
That's what we're hoping to move toward, and in fact, Dr. Isaacson, that's part of our negotiations with our paras and our teachers, you know, for us, it's the support staff that really need to be, we need to look at that, even from our computer technicians, those guys are underpaid, I, I think, we're the second to the bottom in the county. Our, our food service ladies are underpaid, I mean, across the board.
Transportation.
Transportation, we need to look at, well, transportation's pretty close to being right in there, they're 22 to 20, 22 an hour.
Okay.
Um, so they're, they're okay, but it's those paras and subs and maintenance custodians, they're not, the wage is just not very high.
So with this alignment with insurance, will that help make us more competitive?
Well, what we're gonna do is, is that $600 will help increase some, but it's not gonna get it to where it needs to be competitive in the county. And I'm gonna tell you why, one of the huge reasons is that we have a few districts around us that their insurance, they don't really offer insurance or want to offer insurance at the time to their paras, that it was voluntary if they wanted to buy in, so they were able to pay 15 bucks an hour, 18 bucks an hour, because, but now with, with ACA, they're gonna have to provide insurance to those paras now, so they're having to figure out, oh, what are we gonna do? Because I'm paying 15 an hour and I gotta provide insurance. Whereas we're paying nine an hour and we've got great insurance benefits, and so, that's all in that focus. And then last year for the teachers, we were able to do what we call the fix, we call it the fix because teachers were not on the right year of step for year of service, and some were behind, some were ahead, and so we got them moved where they were supposed to be. One of the considerations this year was to look at our support staff and work on that, but, um, you, the short answer is, we need to do something with that salary schedule.
What would it take to bring our support staff up to staff? I mean, what are we talking about?
We're talking quite a bit money.
When we looked into that, what was the factor?
John, for some reason, $300,000 is sticking in my mind.
Well, and I don't, it all depends. One of the things that we've done is broke apart the salary schedule, because they've, currently it's all combined, so if you increase paras, it increases the bus drivers, who are competitively, um, compensated. And I met with them today on the health insurance, and kind of, and we addressed that explicitly, kinda taking our employees as part of our health insurance to the, the book that we kinda went through. I've shown them our current ASBR, how much we're spending, 800% of our sal, our entire expenditures minus the bond payments on salary and benefits. And kinda going through, 18% of that last year in 1415 went to classified salaries, 54% to certified salaries, 15% to insurance. And I think, I just, high schools today, they're kinda like, and seeing that holistic picture of, hey, this is, and how to address that. I can tell you there was some instances today with our new insurance, some very positive impacts, if they're, I'm gonna be able to buy up, and it's costing me $60 less a month, I'm getting better insurance, it's $60 less a month, or, so that's $720 on the year, plus a $600 raise, and that's a $1,300 difference in my pocket. They're like, holy smokes. But also I talked a little about, for a para, facing their hours at $600 is about 57 cents an hour.
Right.
Which is different, I explained to the bus drivers, if you're working 12 months, your number of hours isn't, you're not gonna get 57 cents, maybe 38, so to be mindful of that. Um, to, to go back to the original question of that, of what would it cost for the paras? We have, currently we have 51 paras, they work 1,300 hours, let's just call it even, it's close to that. So if you give them an extra dollar, $1,300 per employee is what it would be. We have 51 paras, it's about 60 grand. To get competitive, $2, it's about 100,000.
That's just the paras.
And then, that's just the paras.
That's just the paras.
Just the paras in that category, you know, to fix the computer staff, we can do that fairly easily, because you're getting, if you give them four or five dollars an hour, there's four or five members, like what Dr. just said, in there. So there's not, it's... So there's not, it's twenty-five thousand dollars to correct that. The paras, because it's such a big group.
We're not talking about food service.
Same thing, you don't have, I mean, you've got quite a few.
And food service also.
Yes. I just did a roundtable at S and A meeting, and we were talking about salaries, and we're the lowest state. And then if you look, then if you go to McDonald's and they're paying adults eight fifty, but, you know, we're, they're not working nights and weekends, I mean, there's.
They're getting nice hours, yes.
It's just hard to find, for us, to find moms that can, that can only work three hours a day, mostly now it takes two incomes.
Yeah.
And ourselves.
Come in that early.
Ourselves a huge issue also, which is, that's paying people that don't work for us, aside from that sixty credit dollars, and we haven't, since I've been here, in a way, we haven't increased our subs salary. And seventy-five dollars just isn't competitive.
Well, especially if you consider somebody has to come in for half a day.
Correct.
You know, it's almost not worth the drive.
And not the drive, in today's job climate.
We go work an eight-hour shift at White Castle, you make eighty bucks.
Yes.
You know.
And our substitute bus drivers are compensated at a higher rate than our substitute teachers and substitute custodians also, yes, because anyone in the classified schedule gets compensated to subs at the rate of a first-year person in that position.
Gotcha.
So the sub bus driver is twelve seventy-eight an hour, depending on where, so basically, when we talk about leave days, and we classify people taking off, that costs a district more than teach, aside from, oh, a retired, so that's when we talk about leave days from a district perspective, that's why it's so impactful, as far as, it's a budget, it's a part of that salary benefit, so, yeah, that's a huge issue.
So is that, I mean, we're already kind of focusing on that, but to commit to something that states that this is what we're working towards.
You could say, yes, that we will, we will work to generate ideas, to, to keep, you know, it will be a priority, yes, you will maintain.
It is a goal, yes.
And I think it might be already written in there some.
Yeah, retain highly qualified staff.
But I thought there was something that talked about salaries or.
Well, and the qualified, I know, John and I have had this conversation of qualified teachers being certified based on the curriculum and their training instead of the praxis test. We've had a conversation several times.
Sure.
You know, because I feel that's a big difference in quality of knowledge and training that they have too.
Well, I mean, it's pretty easily stated that the district will investigate or.
Work towards retaining through.
Improve.
Maybe before we started, we already started aligning, hopefully aligning salaries through the restructuring of the insurance.
Right, so you're already making that progress.
We're making progress.
Or you want to continue, I mean, you restated what you're already doing.
Well, continuing.
We want to continue to, you know, generate innovative ideas in order to retain highly qualified staff. The district will work toward generating innovative ideas to work for.
That's two of the priorities.
And I think that's a key statement that you, I was sitting here thinking, and when I was visiting with the high school teachers and showed them that FASIS reserves are thirty-two percent below Christmas city, and their tax rate's the very lowest, at three point seven four, is ultimately, I talked, as we're going through, is we can move our interns around, we can move the salary schedule a little bit, but at the end of the day, we're not going to be able to keep up. We're not going to be able to keep up with the FASIS because we don't have lures, we don't have schnooks, Fox has, or has, we don't have that.
Right.
So in addition to that, this is what, when you work here, we're going to do the very best we can, but the other part, you, you want to be here because it's Hillsboro. And so when you say the retaining, some of those non-monetary things that we can try to, that don't cause, how do we create the very best work environment?
Well, that was something I.
Morale.
Was thinking about was the morale, and I mentioned this during meet the candidate night, and, and I don't know how the district structures it, but it's my, I guess, understanding is that we separate sick day from PTO, whereas with my employer, to boost our morale, they recently went to a structure of, it's all PTO, regardless of whether you take it for sick or you take it to go to your kids' filter, to help boost morale.
And last, and last year, we had all leave days, employees could take their leave days and they were just called leave days, and we saw, you know, for a couple of years, a large increase in the amount of between three hundred and four and a thousand dollars we're paying the substitutes.
Wow.
And so that's why I was dialing back to, and, and that's a great, I'm glad.
I'm happy for you.
We just, like, two seconds ago.
Right.
And the paid time off is great, and, and that's something, even MSBA was saying, if you go to that, you need to reduce the total number of days, which the board wasn't really interested in cutting teacher days, but, as, as we just talked about, it's kind of crazy, we, we track our teacher leave time by the hour, we pay our subs based on half-day, so if a teacher's gone two or three hours, or an hour, you're paying a person a half-day, and it's costing you more money. So, and that was a conversation, because it's come up as part of negotiations, they want to move back to just leave days. Well, maybe the board wants to consider, hey, if we do that, we're going to half-day full days, because it's costing us sub money, we can't pay subs, and, but here's the problem, and I a hundred percent agree with what Beth Petrie's thinking about Sam, is that we don't want to encourage teachers to be out of the classroom more.
Right.
Because she said it to me before, and I agree, and that's what you're doing.
Right.
That even though they're gone an hour, you're getting them for, for six, you're getting a quality teacher back in there, not a sub, so that's the, where the board's going to have to come together and discuss, what do you want?
Because we have.
Well, and what's best for kids.
It has to be a minimum of extra amount of time.
Right, what's best for kids, sure. And we want to keep teachers in the classroom, and John brought that up, we're paying fifty to seventy-five bucks a day when teachers leave, and it's what's called an unfunded liability that the district has to keep on their books, according to your auditor, you have no revenue to pay that off, but you're paying it out when someone leaves to the tune of between two and seven thousand dollars. We have employees that have upwards of a hundred and fifty days, and they retire, you're paying on fifty, fifty bucks a day, so do that math, that's a, it's a good chunk of money, but, again.
That's a good incentive.
You can't.
Yes.
It's, it's a give and take.
It is.
But with that, down that incentive, is, if maybe, if we're going to pay it out anyhow, but this is a budgetary item that they have to plan for, I don't know that that stops, and this gets brought up by people in the, I know in our classified staff, they've asked, can we turn in our sick days over Christmas break, so that we could get a steady paycheck?
Because they don't get paid.
If we're not in session, can I use a, a, a sick day or a vacation day, you know, as a bus driver, hey, we're not in session, can I use a leave day? We're not having to pay for this sub, they're getting their salary anyhow, and then they're here for the children on days, because we do compensate fifty dollars a day, which is a great benefit, but that's so far out of people's minds, that's thirty years from now.
Don't think about that.
That is, in some districts, I know when I was at, at Fox, you could, if you had fifty, you could sell them back to the district. So people would sell them back, and it was two times a year, because it's a payroll, is at Christmas, it was a little like a Christmas bonus, you could turn in thirty days and it was fifteen hundred bucks, and some people would save up, hey, I got my daughter's wedding, then it becomes tangible funds, and you're recovering those things, or, and it keeps that number low, because that's our issue, is over thirty-year career at twelve days, if you do the math on it, twelve times twelve.
Right.
Is a hundred and forty-four, we actually give three hundred and sixty leave days over thirty-year career, that's almost two full school years, we have to work twenty-eight years at Hillsboro.
Full school.
No, but that's a lot of days when it's out there, I mean, I'd say that kind of, but that's most, it's pretty common, but, uh, when you look at that number of days, it's so far out there to turn them in. I can tell you, personal history is, when I came here from Fox, they actually paid the daily sub rate, and it was like eighty-five dollars at that day. And I, I knew I was coming to Hillsboro and I had a ton of days, and I was, it was like a buddy of mine said, hey, why don't you take the day off, cook off, and I'm like, it'll cost me, and Kelly was like, that's going to cost you forty dollars plus the eighty-five dollars. And, you know, and I did, honestly, but it was enough of, that, because I was getting that check in as you're going, so maybe, that's a possibility down the road is.
Can we make an initiative to look at this and figure out something to help increase morale, whether it's we go to something like you just said, or if we look at changing it back to PTO time? I think we should definitely take a good look at this.
And maybe, John, tell Angie what has happened since we switched back to the nine and three, instead of just leaving it all leave days as far as absentee rates.
We're looking at, it was, it was better on the front end.
Okay.
I have to do, that's on my to-do list, we're about that time to do a comparison. Last year, we averaged eight days absent, kind of eight to eight and a half per employee. Uh, and that's just sick and leave, not.
For the year.
Not PD, per person.
Per person.
Per person.
So that was the average, um, which is, I mean, that's a lot, when you think about your only work, now, of a working.
Every other week.
A hundred, yeah, a hundred and eighty days, as a percentage of attendance rate, it's.
But now you'll have some people driving that up too, that's the middle, so, um, I think it was better, but now we're having, it's kind of coming back around.
Circling.
And it's that time of year, and so, and the thing is, people are going to have, and they need to, teaching, you're, we're going to be here for three years, you got to have kids, you got to take care of that.
You got to go to a field trip.
The days, in, in our conversations, when I, we visit with them, if it's just one day a person, if we recover one day a person, I think that meant a health day or, but one day a person is five hundred days from a district perspective, that's thirty-five thousand dollars. There's just that one day, that, kind of that small thing, but it's decreased a little bit, they're more attentive to it, our staff is, I think, um, but I feel like some, kind of feel like it's Big Brother, like, that, and it's really dying, we just, we just want to be mindful of it.
Right.
I think it's come down because they know that we're looking at it, and we, the other big piece to that is with our policy, and they said, we need to address our policy and our disciplinary action. Our current disciplinary action is, an employee can miss up to twenty days in a semester, forty days in a year, non-FMLA, before disciplinary action.
That's a lot.
You take every Friday off in the year and not get in trouble.
That's a lot.
And so most districts, others, we talked, beginning to talk about that at Policy Review Committee, Melville has five in a month, and then two in a, or seven in a semester, and does like a three-year average. Hey, twenty-eight over three years.
It's a rolling average.
That's, that's a pattern of behavior as opposed to an illness, or you have a child that year, that's.
Now.
A chronic type of issue.
Is it, is it, do you consider excused or non-excused, or does it matter?
No, I mean.
It's just an absence, an absentee. If it's planned or unplanned, that doesn't matter.
FMLA, like, if you have a child, that doesn't even count, these are non-FMLA, twenty-eight days, non-FMLA.
But if you were to submit for, let's say you needed two days off for something, if you submitted ahead of time versus calling in that morning, you guys still be on absentee absence, it doesn't matter, because we have a versus excuse, non-excused type.
I want to come back to that morale point just for a second, because there's, there's going to be folks that, no matter what you do.
They're just not going to be happy.
They're just not going to be happy.
Right.
And one of those things is coming up, because at the policy committee meeting, there's going to be some discussion, because the teachers, there are two things that the teachers, well, one in particular, people in July and August resigning and leaving, and they don't like that, and they brought that up in one of the policy committee, right, Director Petrie, they wanted us to talk about that, so that's going to be in front of them. The next one is accountability for missing so many days. We have employees that have gone over, there are a lot of number of days, and there being some type of stricter enforcement of that, so, and again, that's not going to make morale boost, you know, shoot up Miss Gallo rocket.
But when they go over, how's that handled, is it unpaid at that point?
Yes, that they're still sick, but yet they also get, you know, a letter of redirect or an improvement plan about missing so many days, because board policy says you can't miss five in a month, uh, twenty in a semester, or forty, or forty, forty a year.
Forty a year.
Forty a year, forty days in a year.
Unless it's two days a month or something.
Well, and that's not counting all the holiday time, or.
Right.
And the summer.
That's all the last to make.
That's a lot.
And, you know, when you consider all the professional development days that we have a tremendous number of four-day weeks.
We have, on that, our teacher leaders and people that are involved in a lot of committees, historically, have been out of the class for off-boards of thirty days in a year, and that's, I.
Now, have you.
And that's not, I would say in each building, there's three or four teachers that would fall into that, that would average well into the twenties.
So would you dial that back?
Yes, that's come down, but still, there's.
Have you noticed a difference in absenteeism between a first five-year teacher to someone who's five to ten years based on sickness, illness?
Kind of looked at that, and even, no, there wasn't something that stood out to me, and, well, I've even kind of looked at this in history, it really kind of ebbs and flows, as far as even how buildings get older. Our junior high now is one of our older buildings, if you look at their demographics, they're an old, they're, they're about ready to turn over, in the next ten years, that building will look totally different, the next five years actually, I mean, really, is. No, it's just interesting how buildings kind of do that, so there is some, one of the things that, in looking at how we hand out leave days, and this is more classified related, is once they do the ninety-day orientation, we give classified twelve days, they're not under a contract, and there's been several times in my two years here where somebody will get hired, do their ninety days, work for a month, you know, I'm acquitted, but they don't come, they take like the next twelve days off, get paid, a month. So, and/or we have classified, if they go negative, they don't have any days, they're getting docked, but it's a percent, I don't necessarily view it as being docked because you didn't show up to work.
Right.
You're not getting paid, but we're still paying their benefits, which costs us about six dollars an hour, fifty dollars a day.
That's what the policy committee for review does.
Well, and that's, you know, like, like with us, you know, new hire, ninety days, after ninety is when they start accruing PTO.
Right.
You know, and then they have to do it all right then.
Yes.
Yeah.
So if you miss, you don't accrue at a higher rate.
And the reason you do that is because typically your teachers are contracted employees, they're contracted for a year, they get their days, and that's why, I mean, districts just normally treat their support staff the same way, because again, you want that morale to be high, they think less of us, we're only getting a day at a time, I mean, that's really going to hurt morale with your support staff, if you go back and say, but now your new hires, and I don't know, this might be a legal question because it could be discriminatory, your new hires from, from here on out, the policy is starting July one, two thousand and sixteen, new hires of support staff, you get a day a month, and, and that way, your, your veteran staff that you have currently are not going to be, but I don't know logistically if that's even legal, because you're.
Can you have a probationer period after the ninety days for the next six months?
No, our ninety days is ninety days, because that's when the benefits start, insurance, things of that nature, but he's exactly, we've had three or four people abuse the system, and, and it's interesting because those individuals, when they quit, they want to come back and work in food service, they quit as a custodian and abuse the system, they want to come back and work food service, and we're like, people, what are you doing? We're, no, we're not going to do that, it's not good for our kids or our district, so
I think the kind of the caveat to that, kind of the give and take, is, while, yes, some may not like the earn, but deducting the leave with the time clocks by the minute, they only get paid by the minute.
Right.
The deducting the classified leave by the minute, and part of that is, we're not the sub replacement, if they leave an hour early or thirty minutes early, we're not getting a sub to cover for thirty minutes, in a classroom, you have to compensate for that, so you're not, um, but, we talked about, an hour early's persons leave should be deducted by their natural time limit, because that's other compensating, but that could be the trade-off too, you're having your leave, but you're going to.
Do it.
You're going to earn it for that.
So I've jotted this goal down to say, two thousand sixteen, seventeen school year, the Hillsboro Art Report of Education will work to generate innovative ideas to retain highly qualified staff. That's kind of what I'm hearing. That's kind of what I'm hearing.
I think, yeah.
And then underneath that, it'll look at, okay, we wanna look at the salary schedule, we want to, and then leaves it open to where throughout the year, you can look as a board how you want that to go. If that's okay.
That works.
After sitting on the calendar committee and seeing how little classroom time our kids actually have in a month, mostly fourteen or sixteen days of class time, wanna keep them in there as long as possible.
Well, I want you to think about this, and, and Dr. Isaacson's the, the numbers guru when it comes to taking all this data and crunching numbers, you know, you have a kid that misses class, and you have a teacher that's not in the class the next day, and that's two full days of instruction that kid hasn't had. You know, and, and we run those numbers. And it impacts more than just, um, the, the classrooming of itself. It impacts that student individually and that teacher individual. There's lasting impact there.
Well, as a sub, there's so many days that when you go in, you don't, you don't teach a whole lot.
Mm-hmm.
You know, you're just killing time.
Tell your sub story. Tell your sub story.
What's my sub? Oh, recently, just now? This month, I have subbed, um, all but four days. And those were four days that I intentionally blocked out, because I had things I needed to do. And I get, I mean, I could sub every day.
Is it all here, Lisa?
No, I'm at Festus.
Oh, okay.
I can't sub here, because I'm on board.
Right.
But, and every day I'm coming in, people are stopping me, are you available this day? Can you sub on this day? I mean, I already have six or seven jobs lined up for me, because they're short, and they wanna make sure that they have a sub, you know. And I, during the school year, I didn't do very many. I would do two, maybe three a week, because I'm limited as to what I can do. But at this point of the game, I'm like, well, I, I'm not gonna meet that quota, so I'll just sub. And I've been doing it nonstop. I'm kind of tired.
So it's not good stuffs.
Well, to be fair, I, that isn't just Hillsborough. This is an epidemic in the San Marcos area.
That's why I'm for sure.
Lack of subs and multiple absences of staff. I mean, it's a, a serious issue that's...
What do you think about that?
I didn't think you were gonna bring that up.
What?
I didn't think you were gonna bring that up.
Well, do we really know? I mean, I thought you just does, but I mean, if it's, if it's an area region-wide, what's bringing up the lack?
This is what I think. Now, this is strictly Aaron Corman, not the superintendent. Well, there's two things. One, that I will say to the camera.
I just wanted you to...
I think there's just a general sense of entitlement to where, that I'm, I'm old, I'm owed this, you owe me this, you owe me, but yet, there's not that give-back to the institution, number one. Number two, it's the work ethic. I see a, a work ethic of the generation has changed in the past ten years astronomically and not for the good, where people don't have, I'm gonna go to work with the sniffles, because you know what, I need to be at work. And, and people don't have that anymore. And it's sad, because it's not good for kids. So I think it's a work ethic issue. Now, that's Aaron Corman's still...
I was just making a lack of subs in the area.
That's what we look all about.
They say the new generation's the first generation that doesn't believe they have to work.
And the lack of subs in the area, the job, the job market's changed, directly. Going back to that, it's the job market's changed. It's just, for your, at sixty credit hours, we, there's just, and that pool is dwindling, you know, um, even more so, and then we're competing with that smaller pool. And so even more, I don't know what dollar amount really pulls into that as far as that recruit, because somebody making, has sixty credit hours or a college degree, unless they wanna become a teacher and they're outside of the job...
They're doing something else.
Yeah, and/or, and, and also trying to weigh through them, you're in front of children. So there's a quality standard there, too, that we have to maintain.
Well, at this time of year, the kids are all swirly.
Kids get grumpy.
Yeah. It gets tougher. And that's, that makes it hard. Yes, we have two goals. Um, are we good with that? Is there, I feel like I'm pulling tips to get that one, so...
Well, my next, those were my first two goals, pretty much on target. The third one I had was to maintain facilities.
Facilities.
Because, you know, that's, when I started looking at this, that really concerned me. And I'm not in construction or any of that, but the facility aspect, um, that, you know, are there needed line items in the budget that we commit to?
Okay.
That maybe have not been done in the past. I don't know.
Well, this time last year, I would've said technology, but I feel like we've, we've upgraded and we've worked on that.
I think that is number four, to maintain a line item for that lease purchase over the upcoming years, instead of just letting it go by the wayside after a B's are paid off, because I think that was a misstep.
Well, and I think that's something we are planning to work towards, the facilities. We've already talked about some of those things, so...
Well, um, do you wanna roll that into facilities, more into like a, a bond issue, or you see how I'm going with that? Because as a board, you wanna work toward successful passage of a bond initiative to assist in facilities, but also maintain. Because, I mean, I have Ray Festus playing here for the next five years of what we're needing to build in facilities. You see how thick that look is?
This is budget gonna be easier.
You know, and, and I can tell you, and, uh, for the rest of this year's eighty thousand nine hundred, you'd like to have two hundred and twenty-five thousand for the next two years, two hundred and nineteen thousand in year twenty nineteen, and two hundred and twenty thousand in year twenty twenty. So as you can see, I mean, we've...
I'm surprised it's not higher.
Well, that, that's the realistic goals. I mean, that's the, what we can, you know, effectively try to get to. And, um, I've got bond items here, I've got a ten-year, his ten-year budget laid out with including a one billion dollar junior high expansion.
I would hate to have to do a ten-year budget with my household.
Well, with the bond issues though, too, that should be part of our communication issue.
Yes, it would roll also back into that.
Well, I, I think those could be tied together.
We can put the bond issue in communication.
And facilities.
And, and, or do a separate goal for bond issue to include facilities.
Oh, I don't care, either way. What do you guys think?
Three's a magic number.
Three. So we want three goals, and so we can say...
That's, I always thought it was arbitrary.
You can't stop two, that's...
Okay, so two thousand sixteen-seventeen school year, the Hillsborough Art Board of Education will, what, what do you want, what do you want to do? Work toward the successful passage of a bond issue in April two thousand seventeen?
To help maintain facilities?
To help maintain facilities, okay. Will work toward successful passage of a bond issue or initiative, I think that's a better word, initiative, um, in April two thousand seventeen, um, to maintain facilities.
And address, let's add in to that, address, um, space needs.
Okay.
I mean, there's more than just...
Right, there's more than maintaining.
A lot more than just maintenance if you're doing a bond.
Well, we can put address...
Additional classroom needs.
Or improvements to the educational environment.
There you go.
So that, you still got that.
That's a lot.
Okay. Address, um, needs to improve the educational environment. Hope I can read this. I can listen, go back to this. Now, um, what I can do is, for, for the superintendent goals, I'll come back and give that May-June summit, we can start off again in July, whatever the board wants to do, and I will try to write my goals as superintendent to help you reach your goals as a board. Okay? So the community, I'll have a goal on communication, I'll have a goal on bond issue, I'll have a goal on, you know, developing to improve staff morale or things of that nature, and try to make those measurable for you.
Okay.
Is that kind of the direction we wanna go? Okay. Because I feel that's my job, is to help you reach your goals, so.
Okay.
Then we can go, okay.
Well, I like them. I feel like we've accomplished something, even though we haven't really done anything yet, but...
Well, I think they're attainable.
But on paper.
I think they're attainable, that's what's important.
But it's a good movement.
The video board meetings is...
I see all kinds of posts on Facebook about how the teachers are so much more productive, and there's a better, uh, learning on the days that they can wear jeans.
It depends on what the media... And I've seen over history, um, yeah, I mean, the last meeting, I think it was thirty-four when I came up.
Thirty-four?
The last meeting, but it's a short, it kind of, people go back...
You're suffering with that dawn?
Yeah, I'm able, I'm able to see that, too, what people, it has viewership, there'll be like spikes, and they'll go down, et cetera. But I would say, overall, we've had, I wanna say, a twenty-five thousand minutes watch.
Fishing day.
A combined of all are different. You know, it's just different, and it shows...
But we've been doing this for a year now, more than a year probably.
And so, most of the time, it's in the evening.
Right.
And I was kind of surprised it's a lot of desktop, because it shows the device thing.
Really?
Oh, yeah. So look at all the...
Well, because on your phone, it's like this.
Yes, and, and iPad's been most, and it's like, in the evening, so if people're sitting down...
And their TV is out.
And some people have watched on the smart TV.
I know, if you're struggling with...
Is that something that can be put on the app?
Share in social media that way.
Yeah, but you're working.
Yeah, the problem sometimes is the bandwidth is... I mean, three hours.
You talk about communication, man, we break, we can blast that to everyone, and I need to ask that.
Yeah, the language and whatnot.
I like that.
We could grow a trend if it's posted. I like that. It could be, right now, we're doing it to free...
Sorry.
But if they're running aside on the website...
Yeah.
How's that gonna work with this, Jen?
But we talked about...
I guess they just have to go on a website to view it versus...
Yes. Well, that could use a, for meetings, and it would pull it up.
Are you talking about me?
Yes, we are.
I bet.
You already have it?
I just figured that if we were to talk...
He's gonna read it.
Yes.
So this handout also falls under board goals, and it has to do with procedure, board procedures.
And this, these are just thoughts, ideas that, over the last two years of me sitting in this spot, so it...
From her experience.
Okay.
Yes, I see many positive things I like.
Well, well, it, I, I have no intention of making motions that this is being pushed through, but these are just kind of notes that I have kind of made, because I have found that if we don't ever discuss it, it just goes by the wayside. And often, there's not a time for discussion. So, um, I thought maybe tonight might be, you know, didn't have a big agenda. Um, and like the first one, when I first got on the board, follow-up response via email or letter to people who addressed the board, and I know that there have been people that have brought that up, but when I first got on the board, I attempted to do that, because to me, that is just plain old courteous, good PR. And it didn't take me long to figure out that was really difficult to do, because I didn't have access to their home address, I didn't have access to email, et cetera. Um, and I don't necessarily think that that means to do this, but, you know, as a board member, you know, I would, I feel like that's important, just simply, uh, sometimes it generates, thank you for addressing the board, you know, we will, you know...
Yeah, one month, you'll, you'll, the rest of you, and then Lisa, then, you know, just go around and do it that way, and it's just a, a letter that we sent out, we sign ourselves, thank you for addressing, you know, we're having one, a stock.
Maybe a form letter.
Yeah, or a letter.
On the form, there could be a spot for them to put their email or home address. Um, you know, just simply, again, communication.
Just to acknowledge.
Acknowledge that, we saw them, we heard them, evaluate what they say.
Yeah.
But not really to address the...
No, no, they're not.
Thank them for addressing.
Yeah, not say we agree with you or disagree with you or anything like that.
That's just kind of, thank you. And, uh, as people have, like, Mrs. King, who sent an email to us via the website, um, you know, I did respond, and I gave, you know, whatever her concern was, I had this as similar. So personally, I gave a personal experience that, you know, kind of rebutted a little bit of what was said, but there was a little personal, you know, touch there. Um, and Angie brought up the student member of the Board of Education, except for that night when she gave that information out, we've never talked about whether that was a good thing or a bad thing, or, you know, whatever. Um, I'd like to talk about it. Can we come back? Can we go through this?
We can.
And then we'll come back. Um, rotate reports, like, actually, the meeting for us, we have the reports in our board packet, but for the video, you know, if, it was just a short little capsule from technology, from, you know, finance, transportation, food service, every, you know, two or three months, then other people, when they watch the video, would see that. And that would allow us to get to know those people that we don't necessarily come into contact with. Well, I think because our focus is on facilities and technology, that they should be every month.
Okay.
But the other ones, I do want to hear and see from as well, though. I do think they're very important.
I think finance.
Every month.
I'd like to see, like, Ray gives a facilities report, I would really like to see Kelly give a finance report.
Every month.
Every month.
Transportation and food as well, I would love to hear from them.
Just remember, we're already here till midnight.
Yeah, well, and that's, that was my idea with the rotation, and maybe identify the ones that you do want to hear from every month, and the other ones, you know, just every three months or so.
Some, some we can just read anyway.
Right.
You know, and I don't have to sit and listen to that.
And I'm okay with that, too.
I am too.
But to me, it's not about us, because it's in our board packet. It's about the others.
Well, but that goes, doesn't the report get submitted?
It's on the website as well.
Okay.
But...
Reports are online.
Yeah. Um, but there's probably people sitting here that don't actually, even though they watched the video, they don't read that.
Well, and maybe, maybe some of the, like, you talked about with the, our goals that we're already gonna hit harder on, you know, we should hear from...
It's a communication.
Yes.
And just a short one. They don't have to go five to ten minutes.
Give them a time limit, two minutes.
Well, yeah, I agree with that.
Um... You know, with the reports, I'd like to see a sped report, you know? We talk about how the...
I don't know how we can do that.
It's hard.
Changing.
Yeah, it's hard, because...
Confidentiality issues.
I mean, you might be able to say we had fifteen kids participate in occupational therapy, you know, you gotta be very, very careful there. I mean, that's, not that they're taking...
Is there anything about the sped that can be executed in session?
Well, I'll look into that, I'll, I'll, I'll understand.
We've got a whole new person starting this and knowing how it's.
Changes that are taking place between now.
Well, it'd have to be big changes overall, not necessarily identifying, you know, how many kids or whatever.
That would not be.
How many IP's they wrote this month? We don't need that.
I don't, I don't mean individual stuff.
I know. Yeah.
Trying to grow the program.
Well.
And then the two teacher organizations that have given us, or NEA given us one, but to me, when both organizations are giving us a negotiation package, and so much repetitiveness, you know, the same. And on the negotiating team, sometimes they are at odds with each other, that, you know, if they could unify and become one package, that ten o'clock motion, I think is really silly, that's my personal opinion.
Oh, yeah, the ten o'clock motion.
That if we go by past ten o'clock, you have to have a motion.
Why do we have that motion?
It's in the board policy.
It's in, yeah, somewhere.
She's just been there for years, because boards, some people say, no, we're not going past ten, shut down the board meeting.
Kind of like the TAB meeting after five, you can't go.
Yeah, we're done, we're not going past ten.
After, in two years, that's never happened, though.
Is that's like a, a local, I guess it is, a local board policy?
Yes, yes.
I've never seen it before, y'all have quite a few things that in policy, I'm not really.
I mean, can't we change the policy?
Yes, that's.
Okay, then let's change the policy.
Yeah, yeah. Recommendation forms, cons, kind of like you did with the app, that, you know, what are the disadvantages with going with that decision? There for a while, when we were rotating members, voting order, and, you know, there were pros and cons of that. Purpose of consent agenda and the items that are on there, for instance, every, every month, I know the bills are not on there, but yet, we usually don't question them, you know. Are there other things that we could expedite the meeting a little bit by adding them to consent agenda, and I'm questioning.
I think the bills used to be up there, but then prior boards had questioned every time the bills, so it was moved out.
So they pulled out.
My second year here, I was told, we don't want anything in there that could even be, right back then, that could even be questioned or questionable, that folks are going to want to talk about, because we'd pull them out anyway. So we were limited, but I'm perfectly fine with the things that move things within that.
Well, I'm, that's why. I was asking, because I know the purpose of it, and I did notice that, like, student trips, overnight trips, it had never was in the consent agenda, but now, all of a sudden, it's going back in. And I don't have a concern, I was just, you know, the question was out there for us.
What items can or can't be on that agenda?
Right.
Or should or shouldn't be maybe.
Right, right, because, you know, we can pull out anything at any time. Question being thrown up beginning open session at six, with the, should do away with the perception that, oh, we meet for an hour and decide what we're going to say, and.
Before the open session.
Then open session.
If they only do.
Well, and I, I was thinking open session was at seven to all those who were, well, trying to make it in.
Well, and that's. Right.
So if we move it back, not that we have masses showing up, but, and like I said, I, these are just things that either people have said to me, or this is just kind of my notes, so I'm not necessarily suggesting.
Well, I don't necessarily like breaking up executive session either.
Right.
Yeah, I.
That's difficult, I think.
I agree.
And you answered one of them tonight, the length of, for the financial advisor, was three years, and so that'll be over in two thousand seventeen.
Yes, ma'am.
And I know there's been question about RFP for, request for proposal, for lawyer, school lawyer, and auditor.
I think the auditor, we just, every two years, and we just voted on that, two years. As far as the lawyer, I don't know, I mean, after Jack Stewart left the board, you moved to, and that was in two thousand nine back then? And really, you only go out for RFP for your lawyer if you want to do lawyer, I mean, it's not like an auditor where your auditing services could change, I mean, your company's maintaining that.
Well, I think if we tried, you know, if we wanted to get local representation, you know, I, I mean, not, not plugging his firm, but even talking to Derek, you know, I think his firm represents R seven, and I even asked him, you know, when you have bigger issues that your firm can't handle, do you reach out to, oh, yeah, of course, so.
Yeah, because if you're doing, telling a special ed, there's only a select few people in the state, whether it be Terry Goldman would make this, or, you know, Lisa Burns is a contract lawyer, which there's quite a few of those around, but, oh, who's the special, Melanie, no. Who's the special ed attorney for up there?
Mike Curry or?
Mike Curry helps us out, helps back then with records, so what I'm saying is, there's going to be people that.
Yeah, yeah, so I mean, it's, and I, I've heard, I've heard it said, you know, from, from people that, oh, well, you know, they're a powerhouse in, in school, well, they might be, but you don't necessarily have to have that, I guess is what I've heard and, and come out there, so.
And then the last thing I added there was, really, be aware of the things that have to be executive session, and put everything else in open, and I'm just going to throw out two examples from the past few months. When we discussed the two-year contract for building administrators, it was tied to contracts, but the actual change probably shouldn't have been done in the executive session, it probably shouldn't have been done in open.
Okay.
Right, I mean, seriously.
No, I mean, if you're talking about contracts and tying the, a two-year extension on someone's performance, then no, which is what we did.
Correct, but that you're talking about a person.
Well, we were talking about individual people with, if you were just going to talk about, we, we like to give two-year contracts, then that's an open session discussion, but if we're talking.
That's pretty much what we did.
No, we talked about, did they get, should they earn it, have they, that was our conversation based on people.
We didn't talk about individual administrators though.
We talked about the parameter, well, we talked about the parameters, you know, how do we want, you know, first year, fifth year, wherever, you know, wherever that fell in, that would probably, you're probably right with that, the qualifications.
Qualifications, the qualifications for a two-year contract would be open session discussion.
Right, and just the fact that we went to two-year versus one-year, probably should have been open session.
No, I don't know about that, because you were talking about individual performance of building principals, and if they earned a two-year contract, the water got muddied with, well, what parameters are we going to put on this?
That discussion would have been.
That could have been taken up to open, yes.
And then the other one, like the attendance issue, reporting issue, that we still haven't really analyzed.
Again, I think that was tied to performance. I do, I mean, you might have a different opinion on that, but I'm thinking if you're talking about somebody that's not doing their job correctly, and this is what they're not doing correctly, then you're talking about that employee's performance. If you're going to talk about the issues that we have a need to evaluate the way we track attendance, that's an open session discussion. But you're, that conversation was specifically based upon an employee's performance and lack of monitoring attendance, therefore, it's an executive session.
Okay. And I agree the first time, but then, when it came up again the second time.
That I don't, I don't remember that one. What was that one?
Eric brought it up, and then we started talking about, you know, what.
Oh, how, how we're going to proceed, how we're going to proceed to our grant, that's, that would have been.
And so, that was, those were just two things over the course of the last, you know, few months that.
Well, but yet, that was still, it came up because of that performance issue, I suppose, and that's why the conversation took place, right.
But have we, have we addressed how we're going to deal with that? Because we are going to have to deal with that.
Yes, they are.
That's right, I'm, I'm working up here.
So, anyway, those were just procedures, policies, questions, that if anybody has concerns, I was throwing that out there for discussion.
Initial thoughts for me, I think that the student board member, student representatives of the board, that's not an issue for us, we can do that, but you got to decide where we're putting them, and what power you're giving them. I know there are several districts around that utilize them, I know Bestis Northwest, we've heard them utilize what we'll call student ambassadors. You have to set the parameters on how the student is selected to represent, if they're going to write a letter to you to qualify, if they're going to be voted on by their peers, hey, I think it's a great idea, we got to find just a spot.
Now, we have a junior and a senior, so rank continues to move up, the junior gets voted in, but there's a lot of.
No, they don't have any voting power, they're just here.
Open session or open session.
And they only get to offer a student perspective, hey, the hot dogs are green, we want something else, or, hey, those Crisitos are not chicken, they're beef, remember that?
Yeah.
Chicken, you're looking at our meat for, you know, whatever.
If you want to do that, I can bring you information from, get some policies from other districts.
Angie gave us quite a bit in your folder that you.
I still have it.
I know, I do, too.
So.
I would love to put something like that together.
Okay, now, the HNE MSTA, again, that's going to go back to that whole, I think that's going to be kicking the hornet's nest. Because I think you're going to have to almost, I don't know if you, and this is my question, I don't know, are you going to have to select one per, one group that bargains for everyone? I don't, are your expectations those two groups come together and only present?
Well, ideally, it would be nice for them to come together.
Have two and two.
And I understand that.
I know. Good question.
So, that, when that goes back to morale, folks are going to be unhappy if their voices are heard, and the board says we're only going to hear from.
One or the other.
We're only getting one, y'all figure it out, and what will happen is, you'll have a one and a, and a one A, a one and a, a one A. They're, they're going to include, and they're going to hand you one piece of paper with two different paragraphs on it, I guess is what I'm trying to get at, I don't know how inclusive that would be. But I'm not for sure if that's going to be a change in board policy, we're going to have to look at that, John, because it says the teacher groups will, not the teacher group will, and also, the, the ten PM, if the board wants to change anything, also.
I think that's embarrassing, I'm sorry.
That's a, that's a.
I think that's very embarrassing.
Now, I did want to ask for clarification on you include cons on recommendation forms, are you speaking of employee recommendation forms, or are you talking about executive summaries?
No. No, no, the recommendations we have for open session.
Like an executive summary?
For items, oh, executive summary, okay, you said executive, right.
Yeah, you know, the after-episode, the program after the conference.
Right.
Okay, so executive summaries, that shouldn't be that, no. What are you going to do, but there are no cons?
That's right.
Then you're right.
That's right.
Because there might be something.
Because that's why I asked about the app earlier, you know, are there really any, because we were talking about all the positives, but, you know, most things, there's usually a cons side to.
Be a money con.
Yes.
I think the, the open session, and I understand the public's perception of, hey, you're meeting before you meet, and I think that this was way before my time, it started at six, because the board could be here, but if the public couldn't be here, and they started at seven. But what we wound up doing is, it was pushing your meeting back an hour longer on the back end, when you had an hour you could deal with some executive stuff up front. It was supposed to, back then, is, I mean, is that, you're taking sticks, you know, expedite the meeting, because the board can have an hour to work on stuff.
I think if we work on our transparency and communication with the community, that, that'll go away.
I think, yeah.
Oh, you mean their perception of what happens, it's from six to seven?
Right, I mean, when we're in the news the night before, then we're having a meet, of course, but.
Change the ten to one. No, I'm not doing that.
So, are you wanting us to, to get a, I'm not saying you, I mean, or the collective group, if you want to get a form letter together, that we, for thanking individuals, we can, we can develop something on that.
Sure.
I don't have a problem with that, actually, Director Peter, I think it's a great idea, you know, like you said, careful, we can't say, hey, we agree with you, or you're a hundred percent right, that could get yourself in a little bit of predicament, but, and then rotate, I think is also a great idea.
Rotate, rotate them, because then they hear.
So, you know, at least they get that, we appreciate you being here.
Well, it makes us more proactive. There we go.
Now, I'm still a little confused on the reports, rotating those, because you already have facilities, technology.
I personally like finance.
Okay, so we want to add a finance, and then every now and then hear from transportation and food service.
Maybe, you know, quarterly, or.
Right, on, on transportation and food service, yeah, quarterly would be.
And are you going to get all the other departments that have directors that I didn't think of?
No, you have facilities, technology, finance, transportation, food service, those are the five directors. I mean, I know that you hear from tech, from, excuse me, you hear from.
Murray?
You hear from transportation, when you approve the bus routes, you approve that. We can do, yes, it'd be July, August, you would hear, I mean, we could probably do a September and a February, when they do their ridership counts, when you kind of see what's going on there, that would be pretty easy. As far as finance, that's, what report are you interested in hearing, different than what you already have? You have the bills, and you have the financials already in your board packet, so what more?
Which you present.
Right.
And activity accounts.
And you have activity accounts also.
Well, when I put that there, I was like, the one point eight million, honestly, when I said last meeting, the first time I heard that, or saw that, was from Rob's little election video, and I'm thinking, wow, we, I didn't know that. And so, you know, to me, that should have been shared.
With everyone, yeah.
Yeah.
Well, I, yeah, I mean, it was, and I got it right, it's, it's.
Well, I got it from, from back, but also, it was right in this.
It's in the budget book, yeah.
Did it say one point eight million?
Yeah.
Deficit spend.
Well, it shows revenue and expense.
Well, okay, but.
He just did the math.
Well, then, in our, we had discussions that we could only take from the, the piggy bank so, so long.
You had conversation. That conversation didn't take place with all of this stuff, that we, I didn't see that.
I didn't know this piggy bank.
I did not know that.
Well, then, I, maybe, maybe we'd do a better job going over the budget with the board before you adopt it.
You had a conversation.
I mean, to me, it's been, and I'll have to share with Mrs. Ginch, but I'm pretty confident that the three years I've been with you, and the several years before I got here, since she's been here, that's kind of how that budget tracks. You know, looking back, there was probably a one point two million deficit in year thirteen, fourteen, that rolled over to three or hundred thousand, or seven hundred thousand of the good, it just depends upon how that tracks, and that, but.
And realize that not all of us are number geeks.
Right.
Like Dr. Isaacson sitting over there.
I get it.
And so, you know.
I totally get it.
You know, I might have read through that, but it, I glanced at it, I read it, but it didn't click.
Well, and things that might jump out on the page, but I looked at that and went, okay.
Well, and there's, there's small updates we can give you, like, okay, this is how our, our tax rate's coming in, this is, you know, that's how that's following, I mean, there's things that we can.
I need to show our community that we're good stewards of their tax money, we need to give them something.
We can come up with something.
I agree.
Right.
We can come up with something.
Because they're not going to go to our website and look at the.
And study it.
Because I had people tell me, there's money there, there is money in such and such an account, I know there is, well, unless, unless we got somebody here making this public, I mean.
I think we need to make that. We need a perception that we're not hiding.
That's right, perception.
We will add it in there and come up with something.
Yeah.
So how often?
Well, I'm going to put it in there every month.
Oh, you are?
We'll put something in there every month. As far as transportation, food service, that's probably not going to be every month.
No, no.
Once, twice a year.
Once, twice a year, may.
She said she's good for May, she's going to do a report on getting ready to set the lunches for next year.
There you go.
Okay, all right, I don't think I have any other questions.
How much califa, califa do the kids really?
Decided that.
You can come eat broccoli.
But that would be a policy change, right? If we change.
Throw a bunch of cheese on it, they will.
About beginning. What was one that was, the ten o'clock one was the policy?
Eighteen and ten o'clock are two policy changes. I mean, what was more powerful?
No, not tonight, but you'd have to bring that one on.
Yes, actually, I'm surprised they.
These we can do. But we're going to have that policy committee, so those, this is ten o'clock, when it should be brought out. I know. Well, and I don't think this one is. I don't like breaking it up, but it's, you know, for the, make us not have to stay right as well. And what about this one, we can send it in there, who guys decide? And can we do that, is that a problem?
Really, how they do it, but I see no reason.
Well, because it wasn't discussed.
I've never heard of that.
It doesn't need to be, I mean, the fact that now it's later, that, you know, they're waiting until the.
That'd be one less thing to deal with.
That makes it easier, because then you know the money, you know.
Well, we can start playing on that a little bit, and we're going to see it. We're talking about the items for the consent agenda, just to help expedite.
But then said that they used to do personnel and consent agenda, and then if someone had a question, they'd pull a personnel. Me, that soon makes it an open record pretty quick.
Yeah, it does.
I don't know about that, but like your substitutes, you could put that up there, I mean, that's.
That's a given.
Yeah, I mean, because, I mean, you'd never question.
Oh, I know, it's always.
Because you're adding subs, and I'll be honest with you, this is the first difference, I've been in that you do it every month. Most of the districts I've been in, it's the beginning of the year, at Christmas, and you, or add them as you need them. But since they're considered an employee at that time, when they're on campus, I guess our district decided to vote on it every month.
Well, we don't usually add them.
And that is a limitation on finding subs for us, because after like the board meeting on the 18th.
You can't do it.
I can interview somebody, I'm like, can't sub until after the next 30 days, until you approve them.
And that's, that's silly.
So, look if you need to rectify that.
That's silly.
We need to check that policy, have sub it. Because to me, it's silly, if they can pass out around here.
I can't activate them until after that night.
That's silly.
Click, click, click.
We'll look into that and see if we can fix that.
All right. Sub policy.
Okay, so, that's one that, the sub policy, eliminate the 10 o'clock motion, that's a policy, so they'll have to go through the policy committee. But does anybody have a problem with that one?
No.
Policy committee has to do that for the board?
It's a policy.
Their policy.
Or we're meeting the nine.
Yeah.
We're meeting Monday, so, just send it out there.
Didn't come time to read it.
I read, I got mine on Friday, I read every single one of them.
If any heat comes, I want you to take our, works perfect, that name, we'll send it out to them tomorrow.
Just question about the committees. And my book was that thick, and I read every single one of them since Friday. I have a question about committees, I submitted, I won, my choices to you, is that something we're going to discuss tonight? That part of connection. Okay.
Which reminds me, we're asked to worry about one bit, Eric, please let me know.
I actually, facility itself, I'm going to throw my name over there.
Yeah, I'm keeping the ones that I have.
I don't think, was anyone on, they only go back to that? Throw me on, I'll, I'll.
On which one?
Yeah, huh?
What?
Tiff.
Are you kidding me?
What's she saying?
Nothing.
Nothing to worry about, until the lawmark decides.
Thank you, thank you. Okay, so.
So these are just suggestions that we still have to act on it next month.
Right.
Or at our next meeting.
Sorry, we need some agenda.
Yes. Well, just whatever we decide to put on there.
Well, we don't have to, do we have to put the form letter thing on the agenda?
Do we have to have a prosecutor?
No, there's some things that are, need to be board approved, and there's some things that you just tell me we want to do, I mean, that's different.
I think the form letter, we just do it.
Okay.
Okay, and the student.
I'll bring more information, you need to.
And we'll talk about that.
That will be on the agenda.
The reports, the reports, we don't have to approve any of that, because we just decide.
No.
The teacher organizations with the negotiation package, I don't know, should we?
That's a policy.
Mm-hmm.
That's a policy.
Yeah, it is, but.
So Beth was saying that like the SOTO.
And the NEA gave us the information, so that if it's a policy, that could go to the policy committee, and we have NEA and MSTA both there.
Yes, but that policy's not actually your policy.
Oh, I know that, that was their suggestion.
He is, is a policy from another district, that accepted any.
Exactly.
And I'm going to give you my advice, you have, that's going to be a tough sell, because you got, you know, to me, if you, if the board wants to consider having, recognizing one group that you bargain with, I want to talk to your attorneys, but two, it needs to be the one that has the most membership.
What do other districts do who are in a similar situation?
Can't it be a combination?
Can we do some research there and see how?
Ideally, it would be great if the teacher groups worked together and developed their own, at one, and brought it to the board collectively. You know, the paras do, I don't have a NEA MSTA para proposal, I don't have.
But they might have a couple from each organization on their negotiating team, to present one policy, or one.
Make them basically negotiate before it gets to us.
Have them work it out together before it gets to you.
If it's in policy, then throw that policy to the policy committee, because MSTA and NEA are both going to be there, and.
And they have a sample policy for that, their ages.
The HH, I thought it was EE.
Yeah, HH.
Okay.
Who had that?
MSTA.
Several years back, when they wanted us to go.
No, I'm talking about the one NEA brought to the school board, it was, I thought, EE or something, it was MSTA.
I know the HH one was the one that were, it's a new, it was, would have been a new policy to implement. So we need to investigate that one, but that would be for next year, obviously, not this year.
Right, but, you know, we have made the nine this policy committee, and so that could be the opening to see how they.
Okay.
We received it, and on the 18th, this one Dr. Isaacs will be presenting, we'll go through all that and throw you up the slide.
Okay, so eliminating the 10:00 PM, that's a little new policy. The executive summary, we don't need to do anything else with that, we've already talked about it, right?
Well, do you want us to do it?
I thought we said, yeah, that we've just been doing on, is that right? Everybody agree with adding cons to the executive summary, because that's not a policy.
Okay.
Rotating members for voting, we haven't discussed that one yet.
I thought we were doing that already.
We did, and then we didn't.
And then when we went through all the resignations, it kind of stopped.
But it was kind of difficult.
I was going to ask you, your take on it, was that easy for you, was that difficult for you?
Well, at times it could be difficult, because, but, but I, I understand where Lisa's coming from, as far as she should be the brake tire. Or the tiebreaker. Yeah, in her vote, being president, so, it's whatever you all want, or make it work, it's what you want.
Well, with the months that we were doing it that way, what problems did it present for you?
When people put a motion out there, or change a motion, or add a motion, that she doesn't have written down, this.
Well, and when we went out and came back in, keeping track where we were at, with like coming out and coming back in, but it's, it's whatever, I could do whatever you all want.
Well, and you wouldn't have to keep track, just start over every time, I mean, it didn't matter, I would think.
When you, when you do it on your, and I don't know how your sheets are set up, whenever you're tallying the votes, do you just copy and paste it onto there, from one thing to the next? When you're, when you're coming up with, with your package that you're doing?
When I was doing that, I did like a spreadsheet, and I started it, you know, I started with the next person in the next column, on the next vote.
Okay, okay.
Down, and then I just went down the sheet.
Okay.
Fortunately, it rotated, you know. Well. But again, Lisa was, at some point, she was always going to be first, at some point, she would be first, the rotation part of it.
I don't care.
Because I, well, as a new person coming in, you're last, and your vote doesn't really count after vote four occurs.
Only if you have hanging checks.
But I mean, seriously, you know, you just kind of felt like, wow, it really doesn't make any difference what I do. And so the rotation allowed that to disappear.
And I always started with the officers, that's how I liked doing kind of that part of it.
And, I don't, I don't know if that's all that important when I saw, but. Take, Eric, you were here when we did that.
No, either way, I, you know, either way, I, I definitely see your point with the being the last, and like you said, you know, like it doesn't really matter much. But also, at the same time, I don't want to.
I don't want to create.
Exactly. I don't want to create more work or headache for you, but.
I mean, whatever, I mean, I do think that you need to consider at least the tiebreaker, too, as.
And I think that's a very, a very valid point.
Well, even if you rotate it, she could always be last.
Right.
So my vote won't count.
That's true.
Just on the hot dog.
That's okay, that's all right, I don't care.
Whoever, whoever is first, send a message to how they're supposed to vote.
Make eye contact with them, give them the stink eye or something. So, you guys decide what you, yes or no.
So let's, explain to me how that works, because I don't, I never saw that.
So, vote, so vote one, we'll just go around the table, the first vote of the nine.
An executive.
Beth will start, second vote, Rob will start.
So just an executive?
Yeah, third vote.
Or any roll call vote, but usually it's just executives.
Because normally, I, I'm the one that cast the vote first, yeah, and you would have been last, but now, it'll just, like a batting order. You pick up where you left off, or whatever type thing.
Yeah, I don't care.
Do we need to vote, to can't vote?
No, I mean.
Sorry.
As long as it doesn't create opinion, it's not much more work for you. I mean, you were vice president, and so you always voted second.
I got to guess, I never thought about that.
Right.
It doesn't matter.
Go for it.
Just try.
No, I'm speaking up, just go for it.
Try it for now, and you'll see that.
Yes, yes.
So, yeah.
How it goes, and then there's, you'll let us know if it's a pain.
Right, because you always last, though.
I don't care, that's fine, it doesn't bother me, if I'm going to.
And we're going to, we'll count.
W for last name, she was last, I'm sure.
I'm used to being last.
But we're going to count on you to let us know if it becomes a household thing, because it's apparently not.
This is really nothing.
Taken care of this one, the, the open session at six thing, that's the only other thing that we really need to talk about, I think.
So is that a policy?
I don't know.
No?
I don't know.
Oh, you don't know?
I do not know.
I don't.
Well, so we need to investigate that then, maybe, but, I don't know, I think changing the time, sometimes it's going to throw people out of whack, and.
Well, we wouldn't do it until next year, I mean.
July.
July, I mean. Or July, oh, well.
I really think it's going to extend the length of your board meetings.
Doesn't that also allow us, if we've got some teacher, or something we've got to deal with, with administrators, that we can try to fit that in beforehand?
Yes, we have done that, right.
They're not here until 11 o'clock or 12 o'clock.
Yeah, you're right.
And I think of like, the, like when Rick Francis was here for the bank, and we waited all night long, until we got to that one little piece of information. And it would, maybe.
Well, maybe that could just be trying to be more conscious when we make the agendas, where to put that.
And the same thing with the men from the insurance company.
Sure, or you can vote to suspend the agenda, move them up, because sometimes these things don't come until the very last minute, and Kim has already built, and we can't cram them in in one notes, because it messes everything up. But yes, I agree, they, there was no need.
You're right. So who knows that there's somebody, right?
Like if we went over to executive tonight, Kim would be able to not have to be here.
She could have been called up.
So, my concern again is, it gives you that hour to get some things out of the way, so you're not here an hour after.
I think we, I guess we should just leave it.
Maybe that's it.
Okay, now.
I don't like breaking up, but.
R and P for lawyer, auditor, contractor, we handled that, right, so, do you do anything there? All right, I want to X those off.
Two years.
Okay, so what we're going to do is agenda for the student members of the board, we're going to add to the policy committee, H and E A, H MSTA, and eliminating the 10:00 PM motion. We are going to draft you a form letter, we're going to put policies, or, excuse me, rotate reports on the agenda, we're going to include cons and disadvantages on executive summaries. We're going to rotate board members, and we're going to try to move everything into consent possible, or at least evaluate that. And then the last three things I've marked off.
Okay, works for me.
All right, I had that to do list.
All right, so, we need to recess for executive session.
Make a motion.
Thank you. Do I have? Oh, okay, let me, we're going to have a roll call vote to enter into closed session in accordance with the revised Missouri statutes. Six, 10.021, as agenda items relate to the following, hiring, firing, disciplining, or promotion of employees, negotiation with employees, individually identifiable personnel records. Okay, so I need a motion to recess, Angie, second, Eric. And we need a roll call vote.
Mrs. Walker?
Yes.
Mrs. Petrie?
Yes.
Mrs. Saharsky?
Yes.
Mr. Stevenson?
Yes.
Mr. Cruz?
Yes.
Stewart next time, I see who he's on.
Okay. Thank you, okay.